Good morning, everyone. This morning's meeting is for the purposes of hearing the presentations from the top three firms that council has selected for the manager search. So we'll hear their presentation. There'll be time for Q and A. We'll take a 10-minute break between each. And this morning, we have with us Anne Lewis from Baker Tilly out of Tyson's Corner, Virginia. So Anne, I turn it over to you.
Excellent. Good morning, Mayor White and members of Oak Island Council. I'm pleased to be with you this morning to talk about our approach and how we can meet your needs for your executive search. What I'd like to do is share my screen and run through a series of PowerPoint slides. So right now, you've seen a cover screen, correct?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Well, again, we appreciate the honor of being considered to partner with a town to conduct a search for your next town manager. Over the next 30 minutes or so, I'll be talking about our approach and how our team tailors each one of our searches to meet the needs of the locality that we're working with. I am located in Virginia. We have a nationwide practice, and I'll talk about our Baker Tilly practice shortly. But most of my work is in Virginia and North Carolina. I lead our executive search practice, and I'll introduce you to our team as well. But a little bit about us. Baker Tilly has completed nearly 1,700 recruitments since 2000, with about one-third of those recruitments being administration or city and town management-type recruitments, and the remaining of those recruitments are department director recruitments. I consider our approach very interactive and intentional. This is your search, and we customize it to meet your needs and wants while ensuring that there is compliance with federal, state, and local laws and open records and meeting requirements. And our goal at the end of every search is that you turn to me as you're considering candidates and you say, Anne, this is a tough decision. Any one of these three or four candidates can do the work here in Oak Island. It's going to be who is going to be the best fit for us and to meet the needs that we have in the next year, three, five years. And that's my goal as I approach every recruitment. We have full-time, dedicated, experienced staff that work. This is what we do all day, every day. It's our full-time work. We're very energetic. We're very participatory, and I hope that comes through as you listen to our proposal here. Baker Tilly has been serving local governments for over 90 years, and we formalized our public-sector executive search practice about 60 years ago. Some of our clients are familiar with us through their association when we were Springstead Waters. And Waters Consulting was bought by Springstead, and then Springstead was acquired by Baker Tilly about four years ago. And then Baker Tilly acquired a company called Management Partners. Fortunately, through this acquisition process, we have remained the same team and continued -- we have excellent references that I'll be happy to share with you as well. So I believe that we have the ability to differentiate ourselves from other executive recruitment firms, recognizing that every search is unique, and it really sometimes develops organically. You know, things happen in our communities every day, and we're able to react and nimble as we learn more about Oak Island and about your needs and wants. Our fee is all-inclusive. When we provide you with a proposal, you know exactly what you're paying, and there is no additional fee unless there's something that develops as we move forward out of scope. But that's very rare. Many candidates are familiar with our applicant portal because it's utilized by many local governments across the United States. It's called NeoGov through governmentjobs.com. So that provides an ease of use and an intuitive application process. There are other tools that we utilize throughout the recruitment process that are unique, and I'll discuss those when I talk about our approach to recruitment to help you find out about these candidates. And again, you know, my goal is to exceed your expectations. I want to make sure that we're high-performing, that we're responsive, that we're proactive in providing you information, and that if need be, you can fall back on our triple guarantee. But the search is seamless and timely, and our interaction with our candidates is the same as well. Our triple guarantee means that we stick with you until the position is filled. It's a very dynamic market right now in executive search, and I'll speak to that shortly. But if you make a job offer, and that's not accepted, and there is not someone else in the recruitment pool that you're able to consider, then we repost that position for you for no additional professional fee until we get a candidate that has accepted your position. We don't recruit anyone that we have placed with you for as long as they're with your organization. You know, we've done the work to place them there, and now we're not going to try to lure them away. And if that candidate, however, leaves for any reason within the first 12 months, we will redo that fee for no additional professional fee, just the cost of any expenses that are associated with that recruitment, which includes advertising and background checks. So let me introduce you to our team. Again, we're a nationwide practice, which allows us to really extend our reach into our relationships with our candidates across the United States. As I mentioned, I'm in Virginia. We have our candidates placed strategically in Texas, Minnesota, Missouri, Florida, and even in California. And again, this allows us for very wide reach. I have a -- as an example, I have a candidate in California that I've been in regular contact with. He's in the finance field, and he -- his daughter is actually going to the University of Virginia, and so their family is going to be moving out east. If I had not reached out to him through our network, I would not have realized that I have an excellent financial CFO candidate that could potentially fill one of our searches. This team here has over a century of experience. We have all served in local governments, or all of your directors here on the top line have served either local governments or school systems. I have served in Virginia for close to 20 years. I started out in human resources in my career after spending 10 years in the private sector and served three localities. A city of about 26,000, which happens to be my home locality in Winchester, Virginia, where I was the deputy city manager before moving to Harrisonburg -- excuse me, Winchester, Virginia had a private university, which has its unique attributes and contributing to the vitality of our city. Then I moved to Harrisonburg, Virginia, which is just an hour south down the road and a home of twice the population at 52,000 with a public university. So again, those town-gown relationships are very important, as is the relationships with other stakeholders in our community. Before joining Loudoun County, a county of over 400,000, that is rural suburban and urban, very unique and large county that I served. What this does, the perspective that all of us bring is understanding what it means to have turnover in an organization, what it means to serve local government, what it means to serve in these specific roles, and the interaction that we have had with elected officials, not only in our role having served communities, but all across the United States. We could not do our work without our support team here at the bottom. They are incredibly talented individuals that help us keep our recruitments moving forward by timely interaction with our candidates to make sure that they are submitting the required materials. But you may also hear either from Michelle or Karen on my behalf as I work through a search so that, again, we keep our searches moving forward, and they know where we are in the process. Should I be with another client, or should I be on a phone call, a telephone interview with a candidate? Michelle or Karen can answer any questions that any of our clients have. So that's our public-sector recruitment team. And we've done work all across the United States because of our footprint. In those states where we're located, we generally, in that region, have higher experience in conducting the searches. But we have conducted searches, I want to say, in 42 states. This is just a small sample of similar searches for other municipal organizations in North Carolina and the region. Some are comparable-sized communities with similar demographics, certainly with the similar form of government. No matter the locality we're working for, the objective really is the same, whether it's a community of 100,000 or 5,000 or 400,000, in the case of Loudoun County, where we have conducted searches as well. We customize each process to make sure that we find candidates with the leadership and management attributes that you are looking for in your next town manager and that fit the needs of your organization. So let me talk about our process a bit. To start off, it's with our profile development, and I call this probably one of the most important aspects of the recruitment brochure. It's where I learn -- or, excuse me, of the recruitment process. It's where I learn what I need to know about Oak Island. What is between the job -- the lines in the job description? It's what makes Oak Island unique. It's where I am going to find out information that I can help market the position and help what I call hook candidates really into wanting to learn more and to be part of the recruitment process. I think it's fabulous that you have already engaged in this process. It's very helpful to help to understand what your community members, what your stakeholders are looking for. The fact that you've recently updated some of your consolidated land use plans is helpful. All of this will contribute to that recruitment brochure, whether we -- whether you have a finalized actual product that you'd like us to use, or whether we take the information that you have gathered and create a recruitment brochure, a colorful recruitment brochure with attractive photos that represent vitality, the diversity in the community, the diversity in your businesses, the attractive location. All of this contributes to what I believe makes a wonderful marketing piece. It's what I call the springboard for everything else that we do in the recruitment. The information that I learned during this process will inform the candidate questionnaire that we create, the video interview that we create, how I vet candidates, and the information that I gather from those candidates. It will help me create interview questions for that final recruitment process, and it may even inform how that final process is laid out and if you're -- in that process. So again, the work that you all have done in that -- creating that recruitment brochure will be very informative as we move forward for that process. We'll develop, then, a recruitment strategy, whether, you know, I talked earlier about casting this wide net because we don't know, I think particularly post-pandemic, we've learned about candidates who maybe want to know a specific area of their career and are looking for opportunities in that way. But we will launch what we call a local, regional, and national search so that we can gather candidates that have a breadth of experience and then use the process to help vet those candidates and what they are going to bring to Oak Island. That also includes that I will have direct outreach with candidates. The network through my work in local government, through my work in the International City-City Management Association, the fact that all of our recruiters have similar affiliations with their state associations or other professional organizations helps us in attracting prospective The process allows us to also contact candidates who have been finalists or highly qualified candidates in other searches and that we can reach out to them to see if they have a similar interest in Oak Island. And then we will provide these -- what you see on the right is a weekly project update that I provide when we're in this outreach phase. This will give you a glimmer of look into what your applicant pool looks like as far as demographics. It will provide you with information of what we -- the tasks we have completed and any tasks that are outstanding. We send mailings weekly to candidates to outreach and let them know about the position. We generally post the position for 30 days, and after those 30 days is what we call a first review date. At the onset of each search, we'll create a timeline so that Oak Island knows what the expectations that they've agreed to and going forward, understanding that you have an interim -- helpful to candidates who are applying to understand that there's great continuity of the organization and that Oak Island is very deliberative in how to make this transition from your retiring long-term. When we advertise, this is just, again, a sampling of where we might outreach. There are others that we will provide an inclusive list and -- In talking about that candidate pool, it's very important to us to do what we can to provide a diverse candidate pool, and diversity is defined in many different -- in this example here. We've been very deliberative in attracting more females and people of color to our candidate pools. We believe that they provide a great perspective. Back in almost 30 years ago, the International City-City Management Association across the United States, and it was a very, very low percentage in the 20% percentages. I participated, and we updated that survey 30 years after the first one, and unfortunately there -- I'm glad to say that there's been very intentional work done by ICME and similar organizations like Women Leading Government and Women Leading Government in -- or, excuse me, Women in -- and Women Leading Government in state associations, of which in Virginia I am an active member and in those leadership roles. Our diversity applicant pool -- diversity in our pool has increased year over year. As an example, our -- we saw three applicants, a 4.11% increase in the category of other race, and a 5.82% increase in female applicants over the same timeframe in 2022, have resulted in the work that we're doing in diverse recruitment. So we will provide a -- we do an extensive screening of candidates, and I want to talk about what that includes as we move forward here. After that 30 days has concluded, we have our first review date, and I will read every cover letter and resume. There is nice that reads it for us. I literally read every cover letter and resume. I candidates that match your recruitment profile, and I ask those candidates to complete some tasks, which include the completion of the candidate questionnaire, which we develop based upon what learned from you over the steps leading up to this point. And this does what I call level the playing field, for lack of a scripter there. But, you know, everyone creates a cover letter and resume in a different way. Questions are tailored to see how their experience or how they might approach what Oak Island has. So about 10 to 12 questions, we ask them to provide a succinct answer to those questions, and I review those along with a video interview. And I'll talk about the video interview here in a second. Then I will conduct a phone interview and talk with the candidates about their motivation for the position and any information that may be outstanding on what I've read in their cover letter, resume, in the questionnaire, or the information they've presented in the video interview. Generally, I narrow that pool to about 10 to 12 semifinalists that are presented to you in a semifinalist -- electronic semifinalist report, a PDF report. The report includes a summary of the search process, next steps, the cover letter, resume, candidate questionnaire, due diligence questionnaire, and the link to the venue interview for each of those 12 questions, or 12 candidates, rather, and then a rating form that can help inform you about their experience, the candidate's experience, in each of the ways, in each of the areas that we believe are important to a manager to have, including, you know, financial acumen, leadership and management, relationships with stakeholders, et cetera, and how they may have elaborated on that, each of those aspects in their materials presented. So I spoke to the video interview. So not unlike what we're doing here today, what I'm doing here today in presenting myself in front of you on a screen, the candidates are sent a link. They can practice on this video exercise as many times as they want. But once they hit go, a question appears at the top of the screen. Obviously, you can't see it in this example, but the question appears at the top of the screen. They have 30 seconds to think about their answer and perhaps jot down a couple of thoughts or ideas that they may have, and they have up to, then, three minutes to answer each of three questions. What this does is allow you to see how they speak extemporaneously. They will not have had knowledge of these questions ahead of this exercise. And so how well do they put their thoughts together? What are they including in those answers? And how are they presenting themselves? Candidates are instructed that everything they do as part of this recruitment process is part of that interview process. So how they present themselves is important. It shows you how they might speak in front of a group in your community, how they might respond during a council meeting, et cetera. It's similar, emulating some of the tasks that they may have in their role as an executive with Oak Island. Another tool that we utilize as part of the recruitment process, you know, the steps up until now shows you their experience or how they might approach. This optional leadership and management style assessment, where we would ask the members of council to complete a survey at the onset of the -- a management style that you'd like to see on your next man. A format whereby a -- through multiple choice options, you respond to a series of questions each individually, and then I will aggregate your individual results to create a benchmark. And then I compare the finalists who have completed -- who will complete a companion survey against that benchmark. This shows the job here, and this shows how the candidate acts up to what you're looking for a manager. This comparison analysis looks at the job competence. You can see how you've ranked in customer focus, in teamwork, interpersonal skills, and on -- it's a visual representation of how the candidate -- that leadership and management's style representation. Green or blue is an exact match, or good -- green is good, and yellow is fair, and red is poor. And when we see the fair and poor, then we -- in those specific areas, so in collaboration and in harmonious and customer focus, we would create interview questions so that you can probe how the candidate might flex their style. There's a dis component to it, so I call this, you know, the more of the scientific approach, where all of the other information is going to be how you individually and collectively assess those candidates. And finally, in addition to a public internet search report that we provide to you, we will also provide background records check and a confidential reference report, which would include all of these courts and social media, et cetera. All of this will help you, again, take that funnel approach and narrow that candidate pool to a smaller group of candidates that you'd like to invite for the interview process. We can help in -- we can provide interview questions, an interview guide, a rating form. If you want to have more than one panel, such as having your leadership team involved, any of your department directors, a community stakeholder panel, will help you work through organizing those panels, what questions they might ask, how that day might look, so setting a -- helping to create a schedule so that candidates can rotate through those panels, and then how that panel's debrief with you can help inform your decision-making process if you choose to have them. Often times, organizations or municipalities will include a tour as part of the final process. Some host a meet and greet, recognizing that any time you have any public participation as part of that process, the confidentiality of who is included in your finalists is opened up to a higher scrutiny from the public, and that may cause some pause from some candidates. You may lose some candidates through the process. The important message here is that any time The important, uh, message here is that anytime, um, uh, candidates, uh, might be introduced to people outside of the elected body. We want to be able to provide them at an advanced notice so that they can make the proper decisions and make the proper notification to people that they think is important for them to know. And then finally, uh, we will assist with the offer, employment offer and agreement if requested to kind of help wrap things up and, and, and put a bow on it. So as I, I mentioned, there are, uh, possibilities for you to, um, include in a recruitment process. I was, uh, conducting a kickoff yesterday with a client and several of the questions, uh, or several of, uh, I responded to several questions, excuse me, with a, uh, it depends because each search is unique. And, um, each community has, uh, different, uh, thoughts about how they want to approach a search and different engagement with their, uh, residents and other community stakeholders. And so, uh, we're, uh, able to help design a process that meets Oak Island and what you would like to do. So our firm is a, uh, public sector focus. Uh, our executive search really is local governments, special service districts, utility service districts. So we know the space, we quickly learn about Oak Island and each of our, our clients so that we can represent the organization well and represent what you're looking for. Our goal is that there are no surprises as we move through this process. And so we do have regular communication with you, regular, regular communication with candidates and provide timely responses to, to outstanding items. Uh, we prepare through you, through the, uh, timeline, we prepare for a search. But we are able to adapt as we move forward if circumstances change. And again, uh, you know, you'll, you'll understand our pricing upfront. There are no surprises in our fees. We utilize technology in a way to help, uh, gather information efficiently to help provide, uh, information to you so that you can vet candidates. And that you feel very confident when making a job offer, that you know this candidate and what they will bring to Oak Island very, very well. Our team, as I said, we work in local, we have worked in local governments or school systems. And, uh, we're very passionate about bringing the right people to serve our communities. We feel that, um, this is where we make a very quick difference, um, in people's lives is having the right people serve those in the right seats on those communities. Um, and, and we detractors in the work that we do. Um, I would be your main point of contact. You'll have an assigned team and I will perform the work and provide you with regular updates and, uh, professional guidance from having served communities and, and completed similar searches, um, all across the United States. We're very proud that it is a, um, small but mighty team who can, um, uh, guide a very comprehensive, uh, recruitment process. And I, as I talked about diversity earlier, um, we live by that as individuals, as a team and as an organization at Baker Tilly. Uh, it's evident not only by the makeup of, of the team that we bring, but we have very opportu, various opportunities within our firm. Um, and through our work with our clients, activities and our professional development to learn, to grow and to be intentioned about, uh, diversity, inclusion and belonging. That provides a high level overview of our executive search process, what we can bring to Oak Island. I am happy to answer any questions that may be, um, from my presentation today or from our proposal provided earlier. Mayor, I appreciate, uh, everyone's time and attention.
Thank you, Ann. Thank you for that presentation. Um, I'd like to open it up to questions at this time. Mark, can I begin with you?
Sure. Um, I just had two quick questions. It looked like in your presentation that you showed some different attributes for the comparison analysis. Have those been recently updated or are those interchangeable based on what you're looking for? Like I, I think it was the primary driving forces cluster. It looked like you had some different attributes there than what's in our proposal.
That's right, because that is based upon the results unity. So, uh, what Oak Island, um, when, when you as elected officials complete the survey, I'll create a benchmark and those driving forces absolutely may be different than what, what is in the, uh, proposal or what is in, um, the, uh, uh, presentation today. So every, every time we conduct a search, the elected officials complete that, we create the benchmark and then that is ranked. And, you know, while there are similar, um, I, I believe there's 27 uh, overall attributes in this particular survey tool. How those are ranked are going to vary from community to community. It's the leadership and management attributes, uh, but the, um, ranking is, is going to be different. We'll create that benchmark and then the candidates will complete the companion survey to measure against that benchmark.
So
Is that helpful?
Yeah. So we would have an opportunity to review all of the attributes that you've defined based on past experiences and then work with you to select which attributes we want compared?
So the, the survey tool will, as each app will create the benchmark and then discuss the benchmark with you, which shows how they are ranked. And, um, we can talk about whether that, whether you agree as a body with how they're ranked, or if there is something that you would like to, I don't, I don't want to say move up necessarily because some of these attributes are really interwoven. And let me take an example from, from that list. Leadership as an example is a, um, attribute that's listed or can often combine with two or three other attributes. But if there is, um, it, it may come up high on your list because there, there may have been a, a recent initiative that all is on the customer focus is, is very high. And you may say, well, I want something else to be as high. What there's, it's out of a scale of a hundred. You're going to see it's probably 99, 99, 98, 98, 97. Seven. So it is, um, it's a, it's a way to look at their leadership and management style. If there is a, because it is a, a typical tool, it, it's something that can be manipulated because of the input that each of you individually has provided to us. But we can develop again, interview questions. We can develop other ways to, uh, make sure that we are accomplishing, um, knowledge about candidates through those, uh, ranked areas.
Okay. Uh, last question. Would we have access to the insight wheel and the comparison analysis for all applicants or only those that you've screened and forwarded to us?
Only those that are the finalists. We use that as part of the interview finalist selection process. And yes, you would have, it's actually, what I showed is a two-page report. It's a quite lengthy report that, um, some clients like to read in its entirety of about 20 pages. Um, you can have the full report or we can provide what I call the summary version of a, of a, of those two to three pages that, uh, I represented today.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
First, I want to thank you for a very professional presentation. It was quite informative. Thank you. I, I have six basic questions.
Okay.
Number one, optional web-based survey. Can you tell me the cost of that and what the benefits of that would be?
So the optional web-based survey is $1,650. That survey provides an opportunity for Oak Island to reach out to residents to understand what you'd like to see in your next manager. We provide a series of questions, mostly are closed-ended questions about leadership and management style or topic areas that may be important to Oak Island for them to, to rank. So that you can solicit some additional information about, um, what your community is looking for in, uh, the next manager. It sounds like you've done some of that work already. And so whether you want to utilize our survey is, um, we'd have to look at what you've done and whether this would, uh, um, augment it in a, in a way that's beneficial to you. It is, uh, when I have clients choose to utilize the survey, um, again, it's a way to say to your community, we want to hear from you and, um, we want your voice to be part of the process. Sometimes I have clients utilize the survey at the onset so that they can inform the recruitment brochure, similar to what you're doing now in, in the outreach that you've completed. Sometimes I will have a community utilize the survey when I'm in the outreach phase. And that information that they gather can be used to help inform council as they vet candidates. What is important to the community and their, those results can help them inform how they, um, view candidates and, and what the, um, what they're looking for. So there's pros and cons. When you ask your residents what they think, they would like to know the results at some point, or how did you, you, how did you use those results of the survey? And so there may be a feedback loop that you want to provide. It also provides a, a platform where you may hear more than, um, only about the executive search. It's not uncommon for me to hear, um, to read results in a survey they may, that may talk about a public safety or may talk about some other topic that's happening in your community. And it is, the survey is as good as the outreach that you have. So we would want to work closely with your communications office to make sure that we're reaching, that your community that is reached in ways that are common, uh, 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 communication outlets or tools for you because it'll only be as good as, um, you can reach, uh, your, the members of your community and whether that's residents or business owners. You know your community better than we do and, and how to reach those, um, uh, community members.
Thank, thank you. Another question. You had said you would submit 10 or 12 semifinalists and their rating forms. Is that so we can help you cool it down to three or four, or what is the reason for, to give that many?
And I can, I can provide fewer candidates if you'd like. So as an example, I'm working on a, a search right now where I have, uh, 50, that down to a smaller group. I want to provide you enough candidates for you to, um, feel like you are able to make a good decision and understand what they're, what they're bringing. But I, I, in the end, you're making this decision. So I don't want to narrow that pool so small that you say, no, I, I don't, none of these three people are what we're looking for. The other, uh, reason why I present around 10 to 12 is that it's not uncommon for us to have candidates in multiple searches. And so if, um, you've narrowed it down to five and someone else receives a job offer and they drop out of your search, then you're down to four. And I want to make sure that you have again, enough candidates to review, um, as you go forward in the process. If you would prefer that I only present to you eight candidates, five candidates, I'm happy to do that. I want to make sure that I'm providing
Thank, thank you. Uh, you said a council questionnaire. Now that would also go to the 10 or 12 submittals.
Candidate questionnaire. Yes.
Okay. Lastly, uh, final round process. Would that be one person, two people or three people?
That is up to you. I would suggest that you have probably at least three. Again, you, that not nothing, you may, someone may have looked great on paper. They may have done a fantastic phone interview with me. Their written materials may be great, the video interview great. And then when they get to Oak Island, that fit just might, or they may say, oh, Anne, I, uh, Oak Island isn't what I expected. So I want to again, make sure that you have, um, candidates that, or, or you may negotiate and they say, well, we just can't get there. It's not the salary I wanted. The benefits aren't there, whatever it may be. Uh, and again, we're transparent and we talk about all of this throughout the recruitment process, but it does happen where we've made a job offer and a candidate doesn't accept for some reason. And if that's the case, then I hope that we have a candidate two or a candidate three that you're just as interested in. That you have, uh, the ability to then, uh, explore that, um, town manager opportunity with them.
Good deal. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good morning, Ann. Terry Carter here. You and I had the opportunity to interact when we were, uh, preparing our, our FP. I just wanted to, um, thank you for, uh, your timeliness and your response. You're always very prompt in responding, even in the evenings, which I was surprised. Um, and I also thank you for your proposal because it's, it's very thorough. I'm wondering if for just a minute, you mentioned that we're currently in a, I believe you used the term vibrant search environment. Can you speak to maybe some of the challenges that we need to prepare ourselves for in terms of looking for a town manager?
Thank you for that question. And I'm glad I, I had the opportunity to talk about that a little bit more. As I mentioned, that it's not uncommon for us to have candidates in multiple searches. So that, that is a challenge. It's a, it's a wonderful opportunity as well. There's, there's some fabulous professionals out there serving our communities. And, um, uh, you know, part of the, what I enjoy so much about my job is, is getting to know these individuals and, um, helping them in finding a community that's a good fit for them. I work for the communities, but I certainly have a, a depth of relationships with people who call me and say, Anne, I'm ready to serve another community or I'm ready to take the next step. So having candidates in multiple searches is one challenge. Um, and so we want to make sure that we, um, keep on top of the timeline, that we communicate it with you, that it's agreed upon by you as the elected body, and that we communicate that with candidates. So, you know, we're heading into summer season, which means graduations. It means holidays and vacations. And so we want to make sure that we communicate, this is when we expect to do certain activities so that you can protect the time on your calendars. I can be available as needed. And I have a, a client that we recently can, um, completed a search for. And the candidate was on vacation and made the decision to, to leave vacation a day early to be in, uh, person for the interview process. That was again, uh, something we had communicated very early on. It was well-known so that there was no surprise as we moved forward through that process. So candidates in multiple searches, heading into, um, a very busy season. Let's also talk about, you know, budgets and the work of the, of, of the town, uh, and making sure that that is, um, obviously continues as, as you add this layer of work in finding your next town manager. And, um, then I would also say that, you know, the, um, during COVID, we found that a lot of managers continue to serve their communities. They may have been ready to retire, but they said, this is unprecedented. We want to make sure that our community is safe and that we're continuing to do the work of our community. But post-COVID, several of those wonderful, long-term experienced managers have resigned, um, or retired, rather. Um, and so uh I hope that Oak Island would be open to a candidate that may not have served in the manager's seat previously. If we bring you candidates that we believe have the ability to lead and manage, but they haven't had the opportunity, that um that they will be well-received, and then we can vet, again, uh their approach uh in how they might uh do that in Oak Island. Um, and then I would say that there are certainly non-traditional candidates. You know, I worked in the private sector for ten years before I joined local government, and um worked my way up through the ranks of local government, but there are candidates who may have retired from the military that have served um installations in a capacity of a of a city manager, a similar role as a city manager of those uh military installations. And and the International City County Management Association has a um a program where um either retiring or recently retired military can participate to understand how that transition from serving in the role that they had uh for our country can be in serving in a role in um our communities across the United States. Um, so non-traditional candidates are, you know, I say non-traditional, i- it's maybe because they haven't, you know, gone from A to B to C, you know, that I don't, I don't think that's always the way um our managers um are successful uh in in serving our govern in our communities. And I think there are ways that we can support those candidates uh to to serve our communities. I re- recently served on a on a panel where we talked about how to attract candidates to local government, because, you know, kids aren't growing up and saying, I want to be a city manager, I want to be a police chief or utilities director like like they used to. And so um making sure that we're outreaching to um uh folks at a younger and younger age is is how we're trying to work on that pipeline, not only as recruiters, but I hope as communities all across the United States. But when I served on this panel, one of the panel members was a CFO in private industry, and she said that she absolutely had a transition in coming from uh finance in the private industry to local government finance and and the accounting that we do in in local government. But uh the community had provided her with um uh training through the Government Finance Officers Association, had provided some hours from the retiring CFO to provide uh support, kind of an on-call type of situation. And so I think that there are ways that we can support uh first-time managers uh to be very successful in those roles as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, good morning, John Bach here, and thank you for taking the time. Uh, I must say, uh, you're in a flight of very, very competitive firms. This proposal is consummately professional, and I appreciate that. Um, just for the record, um, twenty-six, nine fifty plus extras, including the survey and follow-on services, correct? Uh, a twelve-month guarantee?
Twenty-six, nine, yes.
I just will make sure we spell out the conditions clearly. In your cover letter, you talk about the the need, the ability, that you would prefer the ability to propose additional terms and conditions. Can you explain what that might be?
Uh, that's, I, because we haven't seen a contract yet, uh, that that's really just a a cover for us in case there's something in the contract that may be unusual. It's it's pretty rare, but it's it's kind of an all-inclusive, you know, let's take a look at the, once we get to the point of looking at a contract, if there's something that is standard in your contract that we may not have seen before, that we have the ability to negotiate if if necessary.
Okay, I'll see that as a boilerplate. And search design, again, subject to many variables, would be a hundred to a hundred and twenty days.
That's correct. Uh, so again, based on that timeline at the onset, you know, you've done a lot of work uh in developing um a a profile. And so uh that may be an area where we quickly receive final approval, or you may be handing over a document for us to utilize, um, and we can begin advertising very quickly. What I'd like to protect is that thirty days where we advertise, because that's getting the information out so that we can attract candidates to the position that I can do my outreach, and then candidates have opportune time to research Oak Island and make sure that it's going to be a good fit for them. And then after that, again, we'll propose a schedule of of um time for me to vet those candidates, time for you to review those materials, and then an interview process. Depending upon where the candidate is, they may have to provide a thirty-day notice, or they may have to relocate. So the bulk of our work can really be completed in that seventy-five to ninety-day. But depending upon the season that we're going into, we may have to adjust. If you would like us to align, uh, a- as an example, the semifinalist report meeting, if you'd like us to align that with a current meeting schedule, that may mean that we have to, you know, uh, push back the timeline a week or two so that it's more convenient for you, and we have the ability to be able to react uh accordingly.
Understood, I'm just trying to line up the three proposals and the projected time. We, we, I think we all understand there are multiple variables which are likely to intervene. So I'll also say that what I see is distinctive in your proposal, and as part of your sales pitch, is the specialized training, the breadth of your organization, and in quotes, to your quotes, predictive analytics. All to the good, I was struck by something you said at at the end of your remarks, that until the candidate walks in the room, all of this may be wonderful data, but none of it matters. And so I want to ask you a question about leadership, that's that's what I'm most interested in. So for me, leadership comes down to three elements, right? That's what the literature says. Leader sets direction in the organization. A leader builds value. If you're in the private sector, you make money. You're in this sector, you build value for the community. And a leader develops additional capacity in the organization. The leader finds and nurtures other leaders. That's my definition. Well, what I'd like to know is, what definition are you using as you look at these candidates and you are screening for leadership? You can shorthand it, just give me three elements. I know you have a lot of things in your survey. What are you, what are you looking, really looking for?
Yeah, that's a, you know, I think that it is so important for a leadership's va- a leader's values to align with the organization. When that alignment isn't there, there, they may not wa- choose to stay with the organization, or the organization may not choose for them to stay for a period of time. So I think that alignment of values is so important. I think that um those those values create a culture in your organization, and culture is why people choose to stay, or why people choose to loo- to to leave as well. And that culture may include, you know, how how um professional development is viewed, how um interaction is viewed, but um how um their um their uh per- the work that they perform is viewed. Um, so I think that a a leader's um alignment of values, their um uh culture that they he- help create in the organization. And and then um I would also say that it is very important that a leader has no surprises with either the elected body, with their staff, or with the community. It's important, I think, to be uh as transparent as possible, certainly understanding that there are times when uh things have to be held close to the vest. But if that um leader can uh align the council's vision and and uh 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 policy with the work that this team is doing, uh, that the community wants to have done, and that they can then uh move the community forward through uh that transparency, that um open communication, that um ability to um understand and and think proactively about where the organization um is headed, um, that that um no surprises, um, and I and I use that very globally, very kind of umbrella-like, serves them well to be able to uh perform not only their duties, but have staff follow and um perform as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, Anne, this is Mayor White. Thank you again for being with us today and for your very professional presentation um that supplement your materials well. For, one of the things I know is important to myself, and I would believe all of council, is the ability for our next town manager to um build positive collaborative relationships, not only across uh um the uh employee base, but with the community and certainly with council uh and the mayor. So um what in your um, throughout your, all of your tasks and your processes and evaluation tools, how would you tease that out?
And and Mayor, when I hear you talk about relationships, one point that I think is incredibly important is the building of trust, which I believe is the foundation of every relationship. And um it it helps produce tho- that the positive relationship, the collaborative relationship, that when that trust is there as the foundation, you can then build upon that, and and you have have great success. So what we will look at is um uh providing questions either in the written responses or in the video interview, and really then bringing it forward as part of the interview process, whether it be through, you know, responding to a scenario or responding to another question, so that the candidates understand this value that is important to uh Oak Island, because it's, when I, when I talk to candidates about the process, I say, I hope that what you read in the recruitment brochure, and as you participate in some of these steps, you can see what's important, and it and relationships and building those relationships internally to the organization, externally to the community, individually and collectively with your elected body and with your leadership team. That's a value that we want to to um exemplify um throughout the process, to make sure that we're understanding how that candidate has um approached relationships in their in their past, and how they might approach it uh coming to Oak Island. And so we'll, whether it's, whether it's that value or others, that's what we want to learn from in the initial conversations that we have with Oak Island, to a- again, with you individually and collectively, um, so that we are uh teasing that out through the process, either in written materials, in presentation materials, or in interview materials, so that um you have an understanding of of the candidate's um uh experience, how they will approach and and what their philosophy is, quite candidly, in in those um areas of uh that the uh council wants to learn more about. I I think it's a uh, that particular one, for me, is a very uh um, i- it's very telling um to to get that perspective from candidates. Whether I had heard that from you specifically or not, I probably would have included something about that in, as a uh, um, when I proposed materials, I would have included something about that, because I think that's foundational to who we are as individuals. And so I'm I'm pleased to hear the the high value that you have, um, and and would help to bring that out in the candidate's uh materials, and and again, similar to other values that you might have and and want to learn more about candidates.
Last question. What, uh, in your experience, um, let me back up. So our town is growing very quickly, and uh our property values are escalating, um, which might make it a challenge for um a town manager with a family to move here and live inside uh the town's limits. That's something that's very important to our community. Council is split on that. How, in your experience, um, does, how important is it that a town manager to be in and of the community? Is it for them to live within the town's boundaries versus in a neighboring town? Do you have any view on that?
Well, it's certainly a challenge that we have seen across the United States. It, uh, Oak Island is not alone in in having um uh housing available uh for uh for managers and their families to be able to uh live in. And and similarly, I see different approaches across the United States. Often in in towns, uh, well, let me use uh Virginia as an example. Uh, Virginia has independent cities and which are located within counties, and then towns are also located within counties. And so sometimes what I see is if um if the, if there's not a requirement to live in the town per their charter, that it may be that they have to live within the county, or that they have to live within a certain risk uh mileage. Um, I have seen some creativity in um the timing uh by which it's required, where maybe they used you've got to move to uh town limits, but now it may be um you have a certain period of time, you have six months, a year. Um, and maybe there's some flexibility on that, let's revisit it, you know, when that time's closed, and if you can show us that you've made a good effort to to try to locate, then maybe we can extend that timeframe. Recently, Rehoboth Beach, Delaware, I believe it is, bought a home for their town manager, and there is a um formula by which that um it, the uh payback is um uh negotiated, uh, and that's uh because they did not have housing available for the town manager. Uh, that was not specific, uh, that was a a approach that they had utilized going into their search, because they recognized that they just didn't have the availability, and and so they bought a home and then offered it as part of their contract, and as part of, then it's, you know, there are terms negotiated with with that um particular purchase. So, uh, you know, I think being open to um if you have that flexibility to be open, it may allow a candidate pool to to um be a little bit more um uh have the ability to to think about it more as well. You know, I I think that i- if they did not live within town limits, you know, the ability to show, for them to show that they can be connected, that they can be engaged, that they can be part of the community, whether it be by, um, you know, they may choose to worship within the town, they may choose to participate in the Chamber of Commerce, in the United Way, in uh Rotary or or similar organizations whereby, um, you know, the town manager's presence, they may choose to volunteer in ways, that the town manager's presence is visible, and um that they are connecting with residents outside of that uh showing up at a council meeting, or um, you know, a a specific project type of meeting, but that they and their family are engaged in ways that uh they're creating those uh relationships, those positive and collaborative relationships, that they are uh, that they care about the future and and the and the direction of the town, and that they are, you know, also kind of have skin in the game for 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 lack of visibility, I think in this time is um advantageous to you because of the, you know, what I'm hearing you say, and again, it's not unlike similar localities across the United States, where housing availability, either the housing stock or the affordability of the housing, may um be kind of tightened. And if they have the ability to have additional time, uh, you know, actually, I'm I'm, let me just add, I had someone provide some, uh, a locality provide some transitional housing. Uh, they actually rented an Airbnb for an extended period of time because housing, and they actually rented an Airbnb for an extended period of time because that got that manager in the community until their family moved after they completed the school year. So again, a little bit of flexibility, a little bit of creativity, again, may get your manager in place a bit quicker and accomplish what you want to accomplish by their engagement locally.
Thank you very much for that insight. That's all the time we have this morning. We hope to make a decision next week. We're not all here today, and we want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to participate in the discussion and make a decision. And as soon as we have a decision, we'll be prepared to, we'll reach out to you, and we have a draft contract in place, we just need to complete that. So we will definitely let you know, hopefully sometime next week. And thank you again for being part of the exercise and for a great discussion, we appreciate you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. It's been my pleasure to be with you this morning.
So the next section starts at 9:35.
Bill's going to the bathroom.
Do you raise your hand?
Yeah.
Again, good morning. We are back from break, and this is a special meeting to hear presentations from three firms that we've selected for the Town Manager Search Firm. This next presentation is from the Developmental Associates. The lead consultant is Steve Strauss.
Good morning, Mayor, are you ready for us to start?
Yes, sir, we are.
Great. Well, good morning, and I want to thank you all so much for allowing us to make this presentation virtually. We certainly had hoped to be there in person, and I very much appreciate your accommodation to making sure that we could do this virtually because of a commitment that I had that I could not avoid this morning. So my name is Steve Strauss, I'm the president of Developmental Associates, and I've also brought, invited Pat Basemore, one of our longtime senior consultants, to work with us on this process. Pat happens to be essentially a neighbor of you, she lives about an hour away in Sneets Ferry, and she would be present with you at each step of the way throughout the process. So let me just tell you a little bit about Developmental Associates and myself, and then I'll ask Pat to introduce herself, and then we'll walk you through our proposal and answer any questions that you have. So I started this type of work in the early 90s as a sole proprietor. At the time, I'm a long time, I'm a former town manager, I used to be the assistant town manager in Southern Pines, North Carolina, realized I wasn't any good at it, and so I went back to academia so I could teach it. And so after I got my doctorate, I taught at UNC Chapel Hill, the School of Government for several years, and then left there and went to North Carolina State University to teach in their Masters of Public Administration, which I did for 25 years. Twenty years ago, we incorporated into an LLC, and we now have grown as an organization. It's not just me anymore, there are about 20 of us that work with the company. We're located sort of in between Chapel Hill and Durham, and again, we've been doing this kind of work for a long time. I want to now allow Pat to introduce herself and let you know who she is.
Good morning, happy to be with you all this morning. My name is Pat Basemore, I'm with Developmental Associates, I have been with the company almost nine years now, and prior to that, I spent 29 years at the Cary Police Department here in North Carolina. I spent my last eight years as the police chief, I have my Masters in Business Administration from Campbell University, and my, I'm sorry, from Vifor University, my Bachelor's from Campbell University. Again, look forward to working with you all, we have grown a lot, and I have absolutely loved the fact that we are working with not only North Carolina, but North Carolina, South Carolina, Virginia, Georgia. So we are, we've spread out, and the virtual process has allowed us to do that. Again, we look forward to working with you, and I look forward to being present with you. As Dr. Strauss said, I am, I live in Sneets Ferry now, right across from North Topsail Island, about an hour and 15 minutes away from you, so I will be on site anytime that you all would like for me to be on site throughout this process.
Great, thank you, Pat. And I always like to brag on Pat, she is the first female police chief of a large metropolitan organization in this, in North Carolina, and she brings a wonderful array of skills and great connections to our organization as well. So I assume you all have our proposal in front of you, should I put it on the screen, or do you all have it in front of you?
We have it in front of us, you're also welcome to use the screen, whatever's to your advantage.
Okay, I'd prefer not to clutter up the screen because it makes us quite small when we do that, so if you all have it in front of you, I'll just refer you to page six and ask you all to, and I'm going to start with a little bit of a preamble. The comedian Chris Rock tells this humorous anecdote about dating, and what he says is, for the first six or eight months of dating, you never know who you're dating because each person sends their delegate to represent them in that relationship. And so it takes quite a while before you begin to understand who that person really is. Well, if that's the case when it comes to interpersonal relationships, guess what happens when you interview a candidate? There are all kinds of signals that are given, that people read, nonverbal signals, a variety of gestures that candidates make to be more impressive, things that they say to be more impressive. And the problem with that is, most employers think that they can read the candidate quite well in an interview, when in fact, the candidate is sending their delegate to represent them. And so interviews are an important part of our process, but they are a piece of the process and not the entire assessment process. What you, I don't even know what other firms are presenting to you, but I can tell you what the industry approach is, which is, the focus is completely on recruitment and screening, and leave it up to you, with perhaps a little coordination on their part, to conduct your interviews and to assess the candidates. Frankly, that's a big mistake. Our process incorporates assessment of candidates as well as outstanding recruitment and screening. So please do keep that in mind as you hear what we have to tell you about our process. And I would also emphasize another key point, which is, we don't make decisions for you. That is not our job. You're the decision makers. Our job is to get you the best information to make those decisions, and what you'll see as I walk you through the proposal, is that everything that we do is intended to get you the very best information possible to make the decisions. We try to focus first on objective data, we know opinions and subjectivity comes into any assessment process, but you should lead with objectivity and data before that subjectivity kicks in, and not be driven by subjectivity. And you'll see that we focus on that throughout our, the way that we work with you. So again, if you would take a look at page six, you'll see that we start off with a job and organizational analysis. And Pat, as I've told you, jump in at any point, interrupt and join in the conversation. So, and Pat has done a number of these for us, for all kinds of clients. So what we do is, we want to include key stakeholders in the, in understanding what's going on in the town that the manager's going to be dealing with. Again, here's where we differ from other search firms. The questions they're going to ask you are what competencies are you looking for in the position? We know 90% of the competencies you're going to share, you want a great communicator, you want somebody who can write well, you want somebody who's a great leader, who's decisive, a good planner, particularly with all the economic development that's occurring, you want somebody that's savvy about economic development and can plan for that as well. That's pretty obvious right off the bat. The question that we ask to lead, we do, we are interested in the competencies you're looking for, but we ask a little different question, which is, what are the key challenges that you're facing in the, with the community, with the organization? Challenges could be, you know, telling us about the, what's going on in terms of the economic development context, issues going on in terms of the growth of the town organization itself, could be technology, it could be infrastructure, whatever it might be, we want to understand what those challenges are. Why do we ask that question? Because you are looking for an effective leader, leaders accomplish challenges, you're not just looking for somebody to fill a position, you're looking for somebody who can lead the organization and work and partner with the board to make sound decisions and move towards the future. So that's why we ask that particular type of question, to lead our job, we actually, it's more of an organizational analysis than it is a job analysis. We would clearly need to get that input from you, we would want to get that input from town department heads and key leadership teams within the town, we're glad to get it. Typically, that's what most boards want us to do, get input from the council and department directors, but if there are other groups that you'd like for us to get input from, we're perfectly glad to do that. We can either do that, Pat can do that in person, and she can do that in, we like to do it in group sessions, have a group discussion, those tend to be richer discussions. We can also provide you with a survey that you can send to any of these stakeholder groups that you'd like, for example, other town employees, community members, and so forth. Again, we're glad to do that, sometimes we're asked to do that for a manager's position, but we, we do think it's very important that we have those sit-down sessions with you and with the department heads and leadership teams. That becomes the foundation for what we do, every step of the way, everything else that I'm going to tell you about is driven by the results of that. So one of the other things that we'll do is put together a candidate profile and post-written job advertisements. As part of our proposal, I sent you a sample electronic brochure that shows you, gives you an example of something that we use to recruit candidates in particular. We actually would design three different kinds of ads for you, a short ad that would go into key professional journal websites, we would also have a long ad that we would put on our website when candidates are applying, and we also use an electronic, that attractive electronic brochure that Pat and I and other members of our team would use to recruit individual candidates that we think would be good fits for the position. As Pat mentioned, we've got extensive experience in North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, as well as Virginia, so we've got lots of contacts throughout the southeast for positions like this. So we actually, just to sum up the recruitment, we use four different methods to recruit, posting on key professional websites, targeting individuals that we send that electronic job ad to. We have, our team is involved in the School of Government listserv, so we send out the information to managers across the entire state. And last of all, we use social media as well for folks that are more tech-oriented, we recruit using LinkedIn connections as well. We typically recruit, you can see on the right-hand column, the amount of time it takes us to do each step of the process. After we complete that job and organizational analysis, we'd need about three days, then we would put, we would construct that proposed job ad, we'd send it to each one of you and ask you to review it, give us feedback, and then we're ready to go to begin our recruitment process. We like to recruit for about 30 days for a position like this, and again, using those four different methods that I mentioned to you. At that point, we would have an initial meeting with you, Pat would be there representing us, we'd also have, we would also like to have one of our other staff members linked to you all virtually during this initial screening meeting. And in that session, what we do is, we present you with all the applications. We actually send you the applications about three days ahead of time, so you will have cover letters, and resumes, and we do insist the candidates complete an application. One of the biggest challenges that boards have when they're reviewing resumes is that resumes are all constructed differently. Some resumes are based on sort of sequentially what they've done throughout their career, others tend to focus more on what the candidate has accomplished during their career, and frankly, I will tell you, there are a number of candidates that are very good managers, managerial candidates, who don't very, don't really have the skill of putting a resume together effectively. And so as a result of that, we find that it's a little bit difficult to use a resume to compare candidate to candidate, so we have them complete a application that we would tailor specifically to what the town is looking for in the position. And that way, we get apples-to-apples information on all the candidates, and we can do comparisons across the candidates with that application that standardizes the information we get. What we would do, again, send you the applications, cover letters, resumes, and our Director of Operations, Holly Bishop, would send you a spreadsheet with each candidate listed and how they meet or do not meet each of those criteria that you're looking for on that spreadsheet. She would also, at that point, have completed a Google search on each of the candidates, so any information that's out there in the public domain, you would have access to be able to read that. She'll give you a little summary of what those articles say, but she will also provide you with a link, so you can go in and actually read the articles yourselves about these candidates. Again, then we have that initial screening meeting with you, this is a closed session because we're talking about candidates, and North Carolina state law allows you to protect the names of candidates, that's extremely important for boards, folks would not apply if they thought their names would become public, particularly this early on in the process. So during that meeting, we would meet, typically it takes an hour to an hour and a half, Holly and Pat would go through all the applicants with you, and share information that they give you, a little summary, and then help you to come to an agreement on whom you'd like to invite to go to the next stage of the process. That can be up to 15 candidates that go through that initial screen, and then we conduct a second-level screening process. Pat would conduct screening interviews with all the candidates. Now here's, these are interviews, so let me tell you how we do these, because again, this is different from a lot of other search firms, a lot of other search firms just have an informal conversation with candidates. Those tend to be, again, very subjective, not necessarily accurate in terms of getting the same information across the board on all the candidates. So we have a very well-constructed interview process. A, we put together some structured questions that we ask of every candidate, again, based on what we learned from the job and organizational analysis. Second, we, we score those candidates on a predetermined rating scale, it's not just our subjective reaction, we determine upfront, here's what to look for in an effective answer, it's called a behaviorally anchored rating scale, it's a one-to-five scale. So Pat would interview the candidates, she would keep notes on what they said, so you have that information as well, and you also will see her scoring. One other thing that she would do during those interviews is, during our initial screening meeting with you, you are going to be raising questions about individual candidates. Why did they leave this organization that's unexplained in their application or resume? Why did they stay in this organization for such a short period of time, da-da-da-da-da? Pat will probe those questions as well, will take very careful notes during our screening meeting with you, and any questions or concerns you have about a candidate, rather than guessing about why they left an organization, we'll get that information firsthand from the candidates. That takes us a little less than two weeks to conduct that secondary screen, and by the way, we have another member of our team, will administer a electronic survey to the candidates as well, that typically focuses on sort of short essay responses. that particularly focus on key accomplishments during their career and how they went about doing that. So Pat would evaluate the candidates in the interview. We would also have another member of our team evaluate the candidates in that survey. So you're getting two independent perspectives on how the candidates performed. A big problem with hiring processes is we tend to get smitten with a candidate by their resume or what we hear what we hear from them in an initial interview. Or we get turned off to a candidate based on what we see, for example, in their resume. And the way our human minds work is we're not as open to information that may challenge. Once we've formed an opinion, we tend to look for information that confirms what we what we're already thinking. So we have independent folks conduct each of these methods so that you're there's no bias built in. There's no assumption that the candidate will did well in the interview, they're going to do well in their written work. Those are different skills, as I'll talk about in a few minutes. So again, you get two independent perspectives. We put all that together. We meet with you a second time, again, about an hour, hour and a half. Pat and Holly would again both meet with you, share the results of that of that secondary screening and ask you at that point to reduce the number of candidates down to no more than five. We're now at step six. I'm sorry, I'm walking through this and assuming you all are following the steps I'm going through. So now we're at step six, which is on page eight. And this is where we our approach particularly is different from that of other search firms because the other search firms are going to say, all right, we'll bring them in and you can interview them. You might say, well, we'd like some questions to ask. Okay, here's some questions that we typically have boards ask, off the shelf kind of process. So interviews are an essential part of the process. We have a secondary screening interview. We think that's an essential piece of the process. Ultimately, as you'll hear, as I talk through this, you're going to narrow it down to two or three folks that you want to bring in and meet in person and interview them. You're going to so that's going to be a second interview. So it's an important part of the process. But or an interview, an interview, an interview. The what most employers have a tendency to look at the interview as the only way to assess candidates. Or sometimes some organizations, some search firms will also throw in, well, we're going to get some samples of their writing work. We're going to have them write a few things as well. Well, again, that's a little better than just interviewing. But let's talk about why we think the interview is insufficient. It's necessary, but it's insufficient. So when you're interviewing a candidate, what can you actually learn about their ability to do the job? Well, you can learn about three very important competencies when you interview the candidate. Obviously, when they answer questions, you can directly observe their oral communication skills. You can see how well they can command the English language or hear how well they can do that. Second, a very important competency for any manager, particularly a smaller municipality, is their job knowledge. They really need to be a jack of all trades. They need to know a variety of different they have to have a variety of different knowledge competencies. That's important as well, and you can assess that in interviews. You can ask them questions about what they know about planning and budgeting and HR management and economic development. You can ask them those kinds of questions, which are very important. A best practice in interviews is to use what are called behavioral based questions. Interviews that don't use behavioral based questions can only assess about 20% of the candidate's capacity to do the job. If you build in behavioral based questions, the best example of those are something like this. Tell us about the most challenging situation you've ever had with a board and how did you deal with that? Or what's the most challenging situation you ever have with a staff member and how did you go about dealing with it? Or when you were folk when you were involved in this economic development initiative, tell us what you did to to respond to, you know, a variety of issues. You could build that in. When candidates respond to a question like that, you learn about a third competency beyond oral communication and job knowledge. And that is you get their judgment or their critical thinking skills. Let's talk about what you don't know at the end of an interview. Can the candidate write and put together an effective memo for the board? Well, you might assume, well, surely they can do that. They spoke well and they were knowledgeable in the interview. Surely they can write an effective memo that represents the town well. Unfortunately, that's not necessarily the case. We all know that writing skills are in decline and very often folks can interview well, be very articulate when they answer questions in an interview, does not mean they can write and represent the town well with their written communications. Now again, there are there's at least one search firm that's having folks provide writing samples as well, so they capture that issue. But let's talk about other competencies you don't know about. Can the candidate make an effective presentation? Well, they spoke well, they were knowledgeable, they were personable in the interview. I liked listening to them. Great, those are baseline competencies, but that does not mean that the candidate can put together and deliver an effective presentation. And you know that you need a manager who has that competency as well, and you don't know they have it at the end of an interview. And what's most elusive about an interview is employers all the time think they can assess the leadership skills of a candidate in an interview. That is impossible. What you get in an interview is the candidate's leadership philosophy, perhaps if they're being honest, you don't know that they're being honest about that, their opinions about leadership, and maybe what they know about leadership. For example, I know that the mayor has extensive background in organizational leaderships, but you know, that you can test and see what they know about it. That does not mean they act that way. What you're getting is leadership talk. You're not necessarily getting leadership walk or the skills of the candidate. The only way you can observe their leadership skills is put them in situations where they're problem solving with other people, which is what essentially what managers do when they're demonstrating their leadership. So we build in other we build in four different kinds of exercises. Two, to assess their leadership skills. One of those is called a coaching role play where they would be dealing with someone. We provide them with a detailed scenario of a situation they might be having with one of their direct reports, say, of, you know, just hypothetically, a police chief whose performance isn't what it needs to be. And what the candidate is expected to do during skill assessment is to sit down with that person and work through those issues with that person acting as the police chief. Do they dominate? Are they a dictator? Are they a team player? Do they hold people accountable? How well do they resolve conflicts? We can directly observe all that information you cannot get out of an interview. We typically set up a meeting scenario. It could be a simulated meeting with community members, simulated meeting with staff, and we can observe how how they go about leading a meeting, problem solving with others, listening, engaging, getting everybody involved in the discussion. So we typically have a couple of exercises that focus on leadership. We typically put together an exercise that captures those presentation skills, a very typical exercise we do. And by the way, for all these, what we do is we take actual issues again from that job and organizational analysis and build them into the exercise. So for example, if we hear from you that you've got some budgetary challenges with all the growth that you're experiencing, we'll actually give the candidates the budget itself, provide them with those challenges, and then they would make a they would have to put together and deliver a presentation to folks acting as board members about the budget and their recommendations for how they would deal with those particular challenges and then respond to some challenging questions about that. And last of all, we typically have some sort of a written exercise where they whatever the key challenge might be, whether it's how they would go about planning for economic development, whether it's how they would, I know you all are moving forward with a comprehensive plan, how they would implement that, something like that could be the basis for a written exercise as well. So four different exercises and the way we and by the way, I don't think I mentioned when you come out of the when the you complete that secondary screening, again, which is on step five on page seven, we would ask you to reduce the number of candidates at that point down to no more than five. And then they would go through what we call our skills assessment. It's a two day process assessors to other they might also be high level local government is another positions like HR directors, budget directors, assistant managers and so forth. And what we do is we bring them in for two day, we involve them for two days. On day one, we train them the entire first morning of the first day, make sure they understand our process. By the way, in all these exercises, we have predetermined rating criteria that they're to look for in each exercise that provides them with a basis for objective assessment of the candidates and every candidate assessed on the same criteria. Then that afternoon, they begin evaluating the candidates. They see two that first afternoon, the next day they see three. And then we wrap up on day two with, again, you're going into a closed session. Typically, this happens about 2:30 in the afternoon. And in that closed session, we we provide you with a little bit of a briefing on how to understand the information you're about to get. And then we have each of those assessor teams and they're typically teams of three to four, again, local government managers from other jurisdictions who don't have a stake in terms of who gets his job. And they will come in and spend about a half hour with you and share with you what they directly observed from the candidates and we'll have all their results upon the screen for you as well. What the candidate did that was effective, what they did that was less effective, answer any questions that you may have about how the candidate performed. So you're getting subject matter experts giving you detailed information about how each of the candidates perform and whether they're meeting what they would expect as the expectations for a local government manager. That takes a couple of hours to have those four teams go through and meet with you and share your their feedback. Then, at the end of that, those folks have left. And if you'll flip over to page 10, you will also see that we have an inventory that we would have had those five candidates take prior to the process. It's called the emotional intelligence or the EQI 2.0. This is an instrument that's been validated for employment purposes, so it can be used in conjunction with other methods to make employment decisions. Now, we have some exercises that whenever you're hiring a town manager, you're looking for two overall basic competencies. You want to make sure they have the technical capacity to do the job. Do they have the job knowledge? Do they have the writing skills? Do they have the planning skills? Do they have the budget analysis skills? Do they have the presentation skills? We capture those particularly in the written exercise and in the presentation. In the coaching role play and in the meeting exercise, we're capturing emotional intelligence competencies. For example, how they deal with conflicts, how they problem solve, how they engage with other people. Are they a team player? Do they see problems accurately and realistically, so forth? So we're observing that in the exercises. You will get feedback from those assessors. Here's what the candidate did, for example, with regard to conflict resolution or with the guard with regard to objective analysis of the problems. And we will also then follow up that with cross validating what you heard about the candidates with regard to their performance in the exercises with what the instrument tells us. And so what you have here is two independent valid sources of information. 95% of the time, they will tell you that what you saw in the exercises is what you see in the instrument as well, which gives you a lot more confidence about the what you see from the candidates, gives you a bit deeper understanding of what's driving the candidate psychologically as they go through these exercises as well. So you have all that information as the foundation for your decision. And by the way, when there's not a match, let me just say this. So at this juncture, where we have gotten the candidate's performance in these exercises and we have objective subject matter experts providing you with that feedback, we also have the results of the emotional intelligence inventory. That provides us with a really rich understanding of the strengths and weaknesses of the candidate. And I emphasize weaknesses because you will not find a perfect candidate with a comprehensive process like this. You're going to real you're going to know what are the strengths that they bring to the table, but there is no perfect candidate and what are the areas where they need to improve? We will be able to design interview questions for you based on, we know you're going to have your own questions you're going to want to ask. We can provide you with a few questions on each candidate based on what we observe from them in the inventory and in the in their performance in the exercises. So that gives you not just a stock set of questions that you ask, you know, everybody, there will be a stock set of questions that you ask everybody, but we'll also actually be able to help you tailor in depth questions specific to each of the candidates as as well for your finalist interviews. Typically, coming out of that debrief with those assessors, most of the boards that we work with are ready to make a decision at that point, that there probably going to be two or three folks that you want to bring in and interview them. And particularly at that point, you want to market the organization as well. We can talk with you about how you would stage that entire process with them so that they're not only learning about you or that you're not only learning about them, but they have a chance to learn about you as well. At that point, we wait until this stage of the process to recommend a back a comprehensive background investigation. Once you've decided on that final candidate that you want to make the conditional offer to, we can help you with your initial negotiations with that person as well and thinking through the contract and so forth. And then once you've agreed with them on a conditional offer of employment, at that point, there should be a comprehensive background investigation where you check we what we encourage is kind of an FBI type background investigation where you not only follow up on the references they supplied, but also connect those references to other folks and give further information. So you're really getting a very comprehensive assessment of the candidates, obviously the other usuals, you know, financial history, criminal history, so on and so forth. It's best to wait until then to do it because no candidate wants anyone fishing around on their references before they know that they've got a conditional offer of employment that can undermine their credibility and their current position if word gets out that they're being considered as manager in Oak Island and yet they don't even have an offer at that point. Last of all, based if you look at page nine, step 11, we can provide an intensive coaching session. Or sometimes we have clients want us to do more than just one, but typically with the successful candidate. Pat is particularly a very effective at providing these types of coaching sessions. She's certified in the emotional intelligence inventory and is very adept at that. One of the beauties of emotional intelligence is it's perfect for coaching because unlike your IQ, which is, you know, we all have a certain capacity in terms of our mathematical or verbal aptitude, emotional intelligence is limitless. Any area that you want to work on and improve, for example, your ability to listen more effectively, to deal with conflicts more effectively, how to get get do a better analysis like that, you can improve upon with particularly if we get if you get some clear guidance on how to do that. And the basic way that we think about it is you want this candidate to be successful. We want them to be successful because they represent not only you, but they represent us. And so we want to do everything we can to give them the insights and the support necessary to do the job. I'll I'm going to wrap up by making giving you one last bit of data, which is in February of this year, I've been meaning to do this for years and I finally went back and looked at all the hires that we've made for executive positions. There's nobody who's done more of these processes in North Carolina than we have by far. We've done well over 300 during since we've been doing executive processes. Here's the criteria I used. I was looking at each where each candidate is in their career at this point. Are they still in the same position where we partnered with our clients to place them? Or have they stayed in that position for at least five years before moving on? Or did they get promoted to a higher level position during that five years? Our success rate is 96.4. So it's not a perfect process. I never said it was a perfect process, but 96.4 is way beyond. I never said it was a perfect process, but 96.4 is way beyond what is customary for a process like this. So again, we feel very good about the success of, of the methods that we use. We, by the way, have placed managers and worked with, or, and/or worked with other coastal communities substantially. We, if you are interested in checking this out, we, I really encourage you to contact the mayor in Duck. He is a huge advocate of what we do. But we've also worked with Bald Head Island. You can contact the manager there. We've worked with them on some public safety positions and they know how we operate. We've also worked, that was hired out of a process that we ran many years ago where he was hired as assistant manager and then got promoted to become the manager. We have also, as you see, we've done substantial work with Savannah. We work with them constantly. And we've also worked with Nag's Head. We're currently working with Riceville Beach to hire a new manager. And there's somebody I'm forgetting here. There's at least one or two other jurisdictions that I'm not thinking of right off the bat. But again, we have substantial experience with coastal communities and know about the challenges that you all are working with. For example, when we helped the town of Duck hire a manager, they were just going through the beach nourishment process as well at the very same time. So Pat, what, anything else I, I left out? I feel so long-winded. Is there anything you want to add to what, what I've said or anything else?
Just a couple of things. So the, when we are conducting the exercises with each of the candidates, we have a proctor that is from developmental associates to make sure that we're being consistent in how, in the information that our assessors are providing for the debrief. The proctors will not be in the debrief, but that, they will have someone, each one in the group will know what they're supposed to do in, in the exercise, in that process. And you, Dr. Schraub said you'll have 30 minutes with the assessors. It's 30 minutes with each group, so that would be about the two hours because you would have 20 to 30 minutes with each group, the presentation exercise, the written, the coaching role play and the meeting exercise. And again, one thing we're looking at is we wouldn't, we wouldn't want our assessors to present something to you that said the candidate's empathetic. Our information is behavior-based, so that will, you will be able to, if they said the candidate's empathetic, we would ask them, what did the candidate do to make you think they were empathetic? So you can act, you'll see the behaviors that they observed as opposed to just their interpretation or their inference of that particular behavior. So that is, and that does help to match up the emotional intelligence instrument with the performance of the exercises.
Great, thank you, Pat. And despite the fact that we add in that skills assessment process, pretty much it's 65 days from the point we complete the job analysis to the point where you know who your top two or three candidates are and you're ready to invite them in for your final interviews. And again, for those final interviews, we would help you structure questions. We would be there on site to help coordinate everything. We can coordinate with the candidates and so forth. We can do, get all that done for you. So we're ready for questions. I would just say on our screen right now, I don't know if Pat has the same thing. I'm seeing myself twice. I don't see the board. It would be helpful if we could see the board during the question and answer period, if that's possible.
That would be my...
Great, thank you.
We can't tell what you're seeing either, but I do want to, for the sake of time, begin with question and answers and hopefully Mike will change your view. Let us know if your view changes.
It's good now, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, good, okay.
Yeah.
So John, do you want to start?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. First of all, thank you for committing the, your time in such a constantly professional proposal. I do have a couple of things I'd like to do first, just to set your proposal against your competitors. So 29,000 plus travel, you're offering a two-year guarantee, approximate time 65 days, and we realize there are lots of potential intervening variables. I'm curious about page 11. You have a release in there for litigation. Can you explain what that is?
Yeah. So we build that into all of our proposals and contracts. By the way, once again, I'm just seeing myself again twice and not the board. So, yeah. Among other things that we, we do is, we do a lot of promotional processes in police and fire departments. We have never been, this, we've never lost a grievance or lawsuit in our processes, but sometimes issues come up where somebody might be appealing the process and so forth or grieving. It's really rare for an executive process like this. It's much more common when we're hiring for positions that report to the manager, not for the manager. In fact, we, we've never had any contention with regard to a manager's process.
Okay.
But in case we do, we're expected to go out and get, and back up our process.
I'm seeing...
We do ask to be compensated for that. Uh huh. As long as we are not, if, if we are responsible, which again, we, we never have been, for a loss of a grievance or a lawsuit, there's no charge. But if we're asked to run around and back up our process and spend a lot of monies demonstrating the obvious that we've run a fair, unbiased process, we do ask to be compensated for that. I, I would just tell you that there's probably a .0001 chance that that would ever be an issue in, in a process for a manager like this.
I'm gonna accept that as boilerplate. I'm just curious that it, it's there. You talked about an FBI-level background check. Is that something that we're paying for as an add-on cost?
That, that is not included in our fees. And you may have somebody that, with the town that, that you typically use for that and you may want to use them as well. We've been instructed by our attorneys not to include that as part of something that we do and are held responsible for. If you want us to recommend someone, we work with Tom Yontz, who is the retired police chief of, actually for the city of Wilson and also for NC State University, who does a really comprehensive, thorough background investigation on candidates, even to the point of catching when they have been involved in social media and changed their name or whatever, he'll catch all that as well. So that is not included in our, in our fees. And the other thing I would just mention to you as well is that, that 29,000, that includes everything that we do. It includes the two things it doesn't include, frankly, we would not charge you for Pat's travel time back and forth since she's so close. If you need me to come, I would, I would need a place to stay, so I would need to charge back for those expenses. That would be the only additional expense that we would charge you. This includes everything, advertising, being with you throughout the process, Pat's time going back and forth to be with you. All that is included in that, in that fee.
Understood, understood. Background, background's an extra cost for us. I'm just trying to get a baseline on the numbers.
Yeah, no, I get it. Yeah, no, that's fair.
So the feature of your presentation, I just want to note this for the record, is the, I put quote, air quotes around it, the objective approach, and there are multi-levels of screening devices, you know, their reliability, one upon the other, and the interface there is something we'll have to think about. So too with assessors and are they really cross-trained and are they equivalent? There's a lot there, there's a lot of data, and that's the feature that you're offering. But I want to ask you a question of perspective. I'm gonna leave the instrumentation out of it. So to me, at the heart of this, from my perspective on town council, is we need leadership. And I would define, I can define leadership this way. And I'm gonna ask you what your definition is. So to me, a leader sets direction for an organization. A leader adds value. You know, in the private sector, they make money. In our sector, they provide better services and living conditions, et cetera. And a leader builds capacity in the organization. He finds and mentors other leaders. That's kind of what I'm looking for. So leaving aside all your testing, when you think about leadership, what are the three things that you have in your mind?
Yeah. Well, your, your focus is on the outcomes, having the vision, building capacity, building the connections, both in the organization and with the community. All that is really critical. Those are the outcomes that you would expect from an effective leader. What you also need are the skill sets that can accomplish those kinds of outcomes. Folks, for example, can be very driven to get, enhance the performance of the organization, but if they do that in a way that turns off organizational members, they're not an effective leader. They may have all the right impulses, they might have the, the right purpose in mind, but they also need to have the skill sets in order to be able to do that. And typically, what we find in local government is that means they need to give folks a sense of engagement, a sense of say, but also holding them accountable. And those are essential aspects of leadership as well. So I would agree with your outcome focus. I would also argue that it's, that, that the relationship and problem-solving aspect of leadership is essential to achieving those outcomes.
I want to thank you for that brief dialogue. Yes, that was a perfect answer. I want to thank you again for your proposal, sir.
Thank you for the thoughtful questions.
Good morning. This is Teri Carter. I have two, maybe three questions. I think, I just want to confirm that I heard you say your search will be a regional search. I think you mentioned four or five states. Is that correct? Is that the limit of your search?
It's not the limit of it. We, we would actually post nationally. International City Managers Association, obviously. And I'm sorry, I don't have them all in front of me, but we typically, when we post a job ad for a municipal manager, we typically have about eight to 10 different sites that we recommend to you all. You can pick and choose those. We, we give you choices. Yes, this one, not that one, so on and so forth. That gets the word out nationally and, but we focus most of our recruitment in the region. But I will tell you, we get applications and you, you may have noticed that in our cover letter. We've had applicants from, in fact, we've had Alaska, California. We haven't had Hawaii, but we've probably had just about every other state covered in terms of our applicants.
Thank you. In, in the process of your search and identifying candidates, do you all have the practice of going to a municipality that you have previously filled the position and see if that candidate is interested? Do you, do you get your candidates that way as well?
Yes, we do that. By the way, let me give two answers, one other answer to your previous question, council member, but yes, we do that. We, one of the things I really take pride in is when we go to conferences where, manager conferences and so forth, we're not just sitting there handing out goodies to folks and trying to draw them into the organization. They tend to come to us and we have in-depth conversations. We work with folks in a very close way. We get to know folks not only on a professional level, but a personal level as well. And so we know, they, they let us know. In fact, I just got an email yesterday from someone who we had placed in a position. He said, all right, it's time for me to move. I'm interested in looking, so on and so forth. So they let us know ahead of time. We don't, we're, we're careful about plucking, you know, placing a person in an organization for two or three years and then plucking them away and taking them somewhere else. We're not into a meat market, but if we know, we, it's not been unusual for us to place a manager in one organization. And then after they've been there for three to five years, they let us know they're ready to move on and then we recruit them just like we do everybody else. I will tell you one other thing, too. I know we're competing against national, firms that call themselves national. Let me just tell you that's overstated. They may say, well, look, we've got offices in all these different parts of the country. Well, frankly, those offices are competing against one another. They want to get candidates in their region. So if you've got a candidate, say, or office in Minnesota, they're not handing off their candidates to somebody who's recruiting in North Carolina. They're trying to get people to apply for their jobs in the Minnesota region. So be careful about buying into what they, the national firms tell you. We've got offices all over the place, so we have contacts with all of these folks. That's baloney. They're competing against one another.
Thank you. I just have one more question. I noticed that you're listed as the project lead and we have your resume. I've heard you mention our contact with Ms. Bazemore multiple times. I'm curious, there's nothing about her in your proposal. And so I would ask you, what percentage of time would you estimate that this council will spend face-to-face with you versus Ms. Bazemore and other folks in your firm?
Okay. Well, Ms. Bazemore, Chief Bazemore would be available to be with you the entire time. I did not realize completely until I spoke with the mayor as we were getting our proposal together, that you all really want a personal presence there. And then it, then I thought, well, gosh, Pat's the perfect person to do this. She's been involved with many of these kinds of processes. She gets it, she's right there and she can be there. She's in your vicinity right off the bat. I would definitely be leading the entire process and project and I am glad to be a presence in every, every session that you have with her, with, with our team. Again, I would need to be doing most of those virtually. Pat would be there in person. I can be there for your, for any steps. For example, one thing that I, I think you might find that I'm particularly effective at is helping you with your finalist interviews. And I can be there and I can help you, again, as I said, we can help you design questions. I can give you a little bit of coaching on best practices for how to conduct an effective interview rather than just throwing the questions at you. And, and I can be there if you'd like. And for example, we helped the city of Winston-Salem hire their manager this past year and the board wanted me there for all their interviews. And one of the things I was able to do is particularly when the candidate starts beating around the bush or it gets a little vague and not really answering the question, I'm, I'm pretty adept at jumping in and, in a very supportive way, getting them to focus on what they need to focus on as opposed to giving a meandering, vague answer. So essentially what I'm telling you is I, I'm glad to be there for every step along the way. Most of that, my involvement would be virtual, Pat would be there in person. And so, and again, we, we would structure all that to meet your expectation.
Very good. Thank you so much and thank you for being with us today.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Hi, this is Bill Kraft. I liked your data gathering approach and I was impressed with the 96.4 success rate percentage. I like that you've worked with coastal towns. Couple of questions. When you get it down to five candidates for the two-day assessment, does that take place in Oak Island?
That should, we strongly, we used to do those onsite. There, it really limits what happens if we do it onsite. We recommend that's done virtually and here's why. If you have a, if you expect the candidates to be there for two days and go through that process, that in some cases can be a killer for them because they can't get away for a couple of days. The assessors, it makes it harder to recruit assessors if they have to come and be onsite, although who doesn't want to be in Oak Island, of course? And so when we do it virtually, it makes it easier for all the key participants, for the assessors and for the candidates. And the research on that method, and again, you see from our own data, there's no loss in terms of the quality of what's done by doing it virtually. We can have Pat there for you for the debrief, which again, we would need to, we would need to do at least in part, virtually. And the way we look at it is, you're gonna narrow it down to two or three folks. Those are the folks that you really want to see in person. We're glad to be there with you when you see those folks in person and help you with that part of the process. So it really, there, there's some huge advantages, by the way, cost savings as well in doing it virtually as opposed to paying for everybody to come there, feed them, house them, all that kind of stuff. So it's, it, there, there's so many advantages of doing it virtual that, that is what we encourage at that stage of the process.
You had earlier said, when we were going through the pages, that you would send applications three days before meeting with us on applicants. And that could be... And that could be up to 15 or 16 applicants. That's virtual also, correct?
Well, again, Pat would be there with you. Now, we can send those to you in any form you want. If you prefer hard copies, we'll make sure that you have hard copies. If you are comfortable with them electronically, you can do that electronically. In fact, we can even tailor. If a couple of you all want them in hard copies and the rest of you all would prefer to look at them electronically, we'll get that to you however you'd like.
Good. I appreciate you, sir. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Mark?
Hey, Mark. Martin here. I just had one question because my colleagues covered a lot of topics. So day 38, step four, closed session, we're looking at initial first screening of candidates. Is there a process on day 40 if another qualified candidate surfaces? Like, do you have the ability to accept more candidates after day 38? Or is day 38 a cutoff for you? What's your experience on later candidates surfacing in the process?
Yeah, we can do that. In fact, it's not at all unusual for us to have somebody surface late in the process. I'll give you an example. We helped the town of Chapel Hill hire a fire chief. I was contacted the day after the ad closed by someone that I thought, wow, the town is really going to be interested in this person as a candidate for a fire chief. So in this case, I contacted the manager. For you all, I would contact you or whomever. If you designate the mayor to do this, that'd be fine, and say, here's another candidate that just surfaced. They're interested in the position. We think they're somebody that you might really want to consider. If you'd like, we can open up our portal for 24 hours and enable them to apply for the position. So we've done that. I cite that one in particular because that person actually ended up getting the position. But it's not at all unusual for us to do that, to find that we've got a couple, two or three folks that missed the closing date. We think, you think they would be viable candidates, and we can bring them in. So yeah, we, I will just tell you, we put a premium on providing outstanding customer service to you all. Here's another factor for you to think about. We started off as a North Carolina firm only, that we would only work with North Carolina local governments. And that's a hard thing to do because anything you do ineffectively, the word gets out to everybody. And so we have put a premium on making sure that we're meeting our clients' expectations. Everybody on our team understands and knows that that's a primary consideration that we have in terms of how we operate. And if you need us to be, to flex in order to get a candidate in, we'll flex and get the candidate in. I will say one other thing that we do that's also not necessarily customary in the process is when we have that initial meeting with you to get your input about the position, we would also schedule every step of the process with you right then and there. So you know when that first screening meeting is going to be held and when you're going to get those applications prior to that first screening meeting. You will know, again, two months, almost two months ahead of time, when that secondary screening is going to be. You would have agreed on that schedule and make sure it works for you. And you would know what day that is, what time that's going to be, and when you're going to get the applications to review for that, and also when the skill assessment's going to be. We believe in setting that entire schedule. I will tell you, our director of operations is a retired air force, member of the Air Force, and she holds, she makes sure that we operate in military time. We get everything done when it's supposed to get done. So we would have that all scheduled with you and operate on that timeframe. At the same time, that doesn't mean we're rigid. We would be adaptable if we need to be. For example, that's a great example you shared. Have a good applicant show up, we would make, we would do whatever we can to make sure we get them in the process.
All right. Thank you.
So Steve, you've answered my questions. I appreciate your joining us this morning, as well as Ms. Bazemore. We will make a decision next week and get back to you either way. But again, thank you for making yourself available to us today, and we'll know next week what the outcome will be.
Well, thank you again for being adaptable and allowing us to present in this fashion. And as I said, we have, we will be glad to have a presence henceforth with you all. And thank you for the opportunity. And whether we're involved or not, we wish you all the best in your search.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you.
Remember when Pat Bazemore was the police chief of Cary? I knew that name.
I'm watching the time, that's why.
Yeah, I was, too.
So the next one begins at 10:55.
Okay.
Good morning, everyone. We are back to our meeting after a break to hear the third of our three firms from, which will select one for our town manager search. This morning, we have with us Bob Slaven from Slaven Management Consultants and Barbara Lipscomb, who is joining us virtually. Did I get that right? Excellent.
Correct.
It's nice to have you join us. So I'm going to turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here, and we're honored to have been selected. I don't know who we're competing with, but we've got some pretty good competition. So I feel honored to have been chosen to be here. I came in last night and yesterday afternoon and had the opportunity to do a not very guided tour of the island and of, and of the part of the mainland. I was looking forward to being here before coming, based on what I've read. But boy, this place is impressive. What's here is wonderful, and your future seems to be pretty well set in a very possible, prosperous and productive and progressive way. So I'm just delighted to be here. My company has been in existence now for about 30 years. And before that, I was doing this work for another, not, another private company, but also for a large search firm, Corn Ferry. And of course, and Barbara has been with, has, who will, I guess, be, I don't see her, but she'll be joining us, has been the town, our city manager in Greenville, North Carolina, served as an assistant, but for a long time interim manager for Gainesville, Florida. Earlier in her municipal career, she worked on the staff of Grand Rapids, Michigan, and she was manager in Castlewood, Florida. She's a credentialed, ICMA as a credentialed manager. She's been with us for probably seven years, maybe a little longer. It's a pleasure. If I'm good at doing anything, it's good at choosing people to work with us. She's great. I do have a presentation. I don't know that it's going to take 40 minutes, but I'm receptive to any questions you might have at any point during the process. So let me accompany a little bit. We are, we're a national company. We've been in existence for about 30 years. We've been in the same location for almost all of that time. We do a number of things. Primarily, it's executive search. About 90% of our local government's support business is in executive recruiting. And we also have a pay-in classification division, which is something that we support. But both Barbara and I work exclusively in the executive search division. We also do some performance appraisal systems and some support or consult, other types of consulting with local governments, goal setting and things like that. We're specialists in local government chief executive searches. Our headquarters is in Norcross, Georgia, with an actual practice covering, I think it's now 46 states. The reason for Atlanta is because we are serving the entire country. And from Hartsfield-Jackson International Airport, we can get from there to wherever we have to go without, most of the time without having to change planes, and many times there and back on the same day. So it's very convenient for us. That's why we're there. Background was, and I started in this business, I was in California and spent about two days, a week traveling to clients who were in different parts of the country, and that was a very unproductive time. And I moved to Atlanta was a smart one. Our project team is comprised of nationally respected consultants who've been affiliated with this company for more than 10 years. I think Barbara, maybe a little bit less, but Randy Frank is a third member of the team, and she's been with, affiliated with me for more than 20 years. As I indicated earlier, our practice is national. We have extensive contacts throughout the United States. We have offices in various locations around the United States. During the time that we've been in business and I've been in this business, we've placed, actually more than 900 government and nonprofit executives, not all of them city and county managers, many of them department heads, but, and nonprofits. But it's been a very enjoyable practice for me. I left local government specifically to do executive search work, even though I enjoyed being in local government. This is what I wanted to do. I had a passion for it when I started doing this, and that passion has continued to this day. More than 95% of our placements have stayed in their positions more than five years. The national average for a city manager or town manager, as you probably know, on a national average is about five years. Where, the last time I did a check and actually tallied it, our city-county manager placements average tenure at that point was seven years. That included people that had been in their jobs for 20 and 30 years after we placed them, and those had been a less time. More than 25% of our placements are minorities and women, and that was important and something I take some pleasure in, in that because some, it's not so hard to recruit women and minorities today, but it was when I started doing this work. Almost none of them are available or at the level of experience where they had executive management level experience. That has changed. So it's not so hard to meet that. If 25% is a goal, it's not so hard to meet that these days, but I'm proud that our 40-year or 35-year average has, is that. I'll manage this project. I have closer to 40 years' experience in placing local government managers and department heads. Barbara and Randy will assist with the work. Both are local government experts. Barbara is a former Greenville, North Carolina city manager, as I mentioned before. She's also a credentialed, ICMA credentialed manager. And I don't know whether you know the significance of that, but that takes experience, working for a city manager. It takes a lot of training and testing, and then it takes retesting. And in order to continue that credential, you have to stay, you have to continue to stay current. And then there is a, every three or five years, correct me, Barbara, if I'm wrong, there is a 360-degree evaluation. It's not easy. It's like similar to what a certified public accountant has to achieve in order to continue that, and similar to what a planning, AICP planning credential is. Randy Frank is a former assistant town manager. Her background is primarily in the Northeast, but she's worked with me and me with her for probably 25 years now. What Randy offers to the team is her tenacious and almost stubborn intent on finding people who meet our clients' needs. Once you tell us what you're looking for, Randy will do whatever it takes to find people who meet that need. And she basically, in this particular search, assuming that Barbara and I continue to be healthy, what Randy will offer is the support to find the folks who you say you're looking for. And if any, in the unlikely event that anything would happen to us, Randy is perfectly capable and qualified to take on added responsibilities in terms of the search. Our experience is in recent recruitment in 45 states, including some in North Carolina, and I'll get to that in a minute. We're based near Atlanta with affiliates in Arizona, California, Kentucky, and North Carolina. This is the, these are our former and current, actually, clients in North Carolina. The current one is Hertford County. The more recent ones would be Orange County Water and Sewer Authority, the, which is a Wassa, Orange County Water, is that there twice? It shouldn't be. It is. Apologize for that. Orange County itself, we placed a community development director there recently. Buncombe County. We've, well, I guess those are the more recent ones. Greenville, not only, I placed Barbara there several years ago, and then she was there about five years, and then we did the work to replace her. So we've worked for them several times. At any rate, that's our experience. And North Carolina, any questions about that, I'll be happy to respond to. We, our process is designed and based on criteria you folks set. And I understand that you've done some considerable amount of work to maybe short-circuit that process. I understand you've got some, you have worked on a profile and a job, and we'll be working on a job description. That will be very helpful for us because I understand that not only you folks have been involved in that, but members of the community have, which is what we would do on your behalf. So we'd be interested in picking up on what you do and providing whatever counsel and consulting that might be helpful to make sure that those documents are up to date, accurate, and that they reflect a set of criteria that would be productive to use and result in our ability to attract good people to it. We, in our recruiting, we do more than place ads. We utilize targeted websites, social media platforms, professional publications, professional associations. We have an extensive database and a lot of professional contacts that we use to identify people who fit your needs. And sometimes people will ask about how large our database is. I really don't know, but I will tell you that it's comprised of people who have either applied for other positions or who we have asked for resumes. But I'll also tell you that some of the other sources are better and more productive use of our time to spend with them because we, our database is based on, includes a lot of people that we have sorted and refer to our clients as top candidates. And of those groups, only one gets the job. The others, if they're as good as they need to be to get into the finalist group, they're probably six months from the time they apply, they've taken other jobs. We use it as a source, and it can be productive for that. But the real value of it is that these people are top folks in their field, and they know others. So, and again, we're basing our recruitment on what you say you're looking for. So we make sure that when we're dealing with resources, that they know what we're looking for, so that they're not just giving us people who have impressed them, but they have to be people who meet your criteria or who are seriously suspected to meet your criteria. We directly contact the prospects that come to our attention and encourage their interest, send them information about Oak Island, and really, and do whatever we can to encourage their interest. We also are very straightforward with them. We'll want to talk to them about their experience and how it fits the criteria you set. If it doesn't, we're pretty honest with them about that. If, if, we'll want to discuss with them what their expectations in terms of, and needs are in terms of making a move professionally and their family. And if that fits, that's great. If it doesn't, we don't want to encourage people who are going to ultimately say no. But people who are of interest to us that meet your criteria, we will want to talk to you about before we send them to you as finalist candidates. We'll have a meeting with you once the recruitment phase is over and we do some preliminary background work on them, get some additional information from them, both by telephone and in writing. And so we want to be pretty sure that when we present them to you and semifinalists, as semifinalist candidates, if you select them as finalists, that they, there's a very good chance that their interest is strong enough and that their credentials are strong enough and that their background is, we'll clear our very in-depth background checks. We do thorough background investigations on all candidates, and they include reference checks, onsite finalist interviews, which for a while during COVID, we couldn't do, but we can do now, credit checks, education and professional credential verification, civil, criminal. civil, criminal, DMV court records, including national criminal records, sex offender registry, social media checks. We use a professional service to do that, and they're very good. They're a nationally respected professional service, and what they have given us is high-quality work, and it's very useful for us in determining whether or not to present otherwise good-looking prospects to you or not, and we make sure you understand if there is a glitch in the background somehow or other, that you know about it before, and choose, make a decision about whether that's something acceptable to you or not before they come here. We assist the council to design tailored interviews and selection processes, make logistical arrangements necessary for those interviews to take place in a professional and productive way, provide interview questions, rating sheets, ranking forms, et cetera. We'll respond, we want to talk to you at that point and that process of how and if and how you may want to involve people other than the city council, town council, including citizens, senior staff. Our advice to you and strong advice to you is to stay in charge of the process, so whoever else you might have involved in the process are there as counsel to you, but not as making decisions as to who you're going to hire and who you're not. That's your job. We'll help you facilitate an employment agreement. One of the things that you will know before inviting people to Oak Island is what their financial expectations are, so that, again, we're trying to make sure that if you, when you choose somebody, that all of that has been resolved, not the numbers so much as the needs, and whether or not their expectations and needs will be accommodated here. We facilitate the establishment of first-year goals. That's usually a goal-setting session between us and each of you and with your senior staff involved, but again, those goals are performance goals, not town goals, and they are goals that you, as the governing body, expect the new manager to achieve within the first year. Then we follow up with you and the new town manager at six months and a year, and make sure everything is fitting together and working in the way that you anticipated. Some of our commitment to you is that we will keep working for the town until a placement is made. We'll redo, and that placement is somebody that has, that you have agreed to hire and are pleased with and has made a commitment to this town. We'll redo the search for no additional professional fee if a new manager leaves for any reason within the first two years. I'm proud to say that in the number of years I've been in this business, we've honored that guarantee three times. Once because somebody quit to become a pastor two weeks before the two years were up, once because somebody died, and once, well, actually four times, and once because a person took a job in Florida, offered a job by a city commission, and then election took place. Unexpectedly, the majority of that commission was defeated. The new commission thought the candidate hired was fine. The candidate who was hired did not feel comfortable with the new commission. Old commission was very pro-growth and development. The new commission was a reaction to that and did not support that, those goals. So he didn't feel comfortable. He said, "I'll wait until Slavin finds somebody else," and we did, and that person was there, and it was successful. We will never recruit a person placed by our services. We, and we will not recruit Oak Island employees for at least two years, and if, even after that period, if somebody on your staff applies for a job we're handling, which of course is in the public domain, we will want them to talk to you folks and for us to talk to you folks before they become active candidates. It takes typically about 90 days from the time the profile is approved to the time the candidate is hired. That is, that 90-day calendar has been in existence for a long time, and there are times when we want to speed that up a little bit, and times when, at the council's pleasure, we'll want to extend it to accommodate unique situations in our client environment. The way it might be enhanced is if we go out into the market, one of the things we do is place advertising and begin the recruitment phase once you have approved a profile, and when we are lucky, and this does happen periodically, we get very, very high-qualified people applying early on. We're dealing in a very competitive environment in the city-county-town-manager field, and if somebody is real good and applies early on, chances are, if we wait 90 days, we'll lose them to somebody else. So we'll want to set this up with the, with the understanding that we may want to bring people to you before that, so we won't put a final filing, application filing date on it. We'll be clear as to what our strategy is, ask people to apply, and watch the resumes as they come in. And if we see good people early on, we won't stop the recruitment, but we'll want to talk to you about it. We're prepared to begin the project within 15 days of entering a contract with the town. This is the project cost. It should be the same as the profile that, I mean, as a proposal we sent to you, if it's not the profile we sent to you is accurate, I did check before I did the PowerPoint, I think it's the same. It's intended to be. By us, as I said earlier in the process, we are, been in business a long time, and we know we're in a competitive environment. There are other very good firms in this country that we compete with. One of the things that people tell us about us is they like the fact that we're so tied to outcome, when the outcome is what you tell us you're looking for. And we have found, and we spent so much time at the beginning of the process finding out what you want to see the outcome to be, that I think that's the reason that our tenure of our placements is as long as it is. The process is interactive and customized to meet individual client needs, and we consider ourselves kind of a team with you folks, and you are, you set the goals, you're a team leader. We work with you, we spend a lot of time with you at the beginning of the process, we interact with you frequently throughout the process, and we want to make sure you know what we're doing, and if there's anything that occurs here that we need to know about, that we're provided the opportunity to hear that from you folks. 95% of our placements remain in their positions, I've said this earlier, for more than five years. We do these onsite visits with finalists, and our guarantees are about as strong in the field as any. Our costs are capped and well within industry standards. And, I don't know how long I've taken, but if you've got questions, I'd be delighted to entertain them. And I don't know where Barbara is in this, but if she, if we can get her involved.
I'm right here.
You're in the corner of the room. At any rate, Barbara, feel free, but there she is.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Barbara, again.
Good morning. Good morning, counsel.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I think Bob gave a good overview, but, and maybe if you all will go on with your questions, if I have some more to add, I'll time in.
All righty, thank you.
We were doing, just before the questions, one of the things about Barbara that I find remarkable, in addition to the things that I just described, we were doing some work for a town in Florida recently, and we went to the town progress report. The mayor looks at me, and Barbara was, I don't know, she was parking the car or something, she didn't walk in with me, and he says, "Where's Barbara?" And I said, "Well, she'll be here in a few minutes." He says, "Good, because that's who we were looking forward to seeing." So I felt good about it, I think. At any rate.
Excellent, so we're ready for questions and answers, Bill? You want to start?
Sure. Hi, Bob. Hi, Barbara. Looking at the fee, the fee is $15,820, but with the added fees, it will not surpass $24,520. Is that correct?
Yes, except the added fees are out-of-pocket expenses. If it costs us more to do this work than that expense budget, you won't get a, unless you've asked us to do some additional work, you won't, we won't bill you for it. If we don't pay that, we won't bill you that much, and you will get not just invoice with expenses, but you'll get the receipts, so you'll know how we spent the money.
Okay. You said you had affiliates in four other states, Kentucky, North Carolina. Are they sister companies or just companies that you work with?
There are people who work for me on a 1099 basis, but they only do search work for me. And Barbara, depending on how busy we are, she'll be working full-time or not. A gentleman in Arizona has been working full-time. Randy Frank has her own company, which does a lot of class and comp work for primarily municipalities in Connecticut, but when we're doing search work, we're doing them together. There are times when I'm working for her and times when she's working for me, but the relationship is very productive. It's kind of a symbiotic relationship where you don't know who, when we're working together, people don't know or distinguish between whether or not I'm being paid through Slavin Management or through her company and vice versa. So it works very seamlessly.
I was really excited to see where you said on page three, typically 90 days from time profile is approved, the candidate is hired. That's pretty much been the norm?
It's the, let me put it this way, yes, unless our client has some reason to want it to be abbreviated or extended. There are times when, let's pull a kind of a frequent example, when there are elections that begin to look like they might change the nature of the elected body. We've had councils or communities say, "Let's wait till after the election." But normally, our process is a 90-day process, and unless we run into some trouble of some kind, I'm not anticipating for a community like this, we can do it in 90 days or less.
Lastly, just a side note, I put a star next to it. You made the statement, "Town council should stay in charge of the process."
Yes, sir.
I just like that statement. Thank you for saying that.
And that can be a very smooth type of a process. You know, we see, and have, most of our work for city-county-town manager recruitment involves some citizen and/or senior, and/or senior staff involvement. That's very helpful, and I think it helps you, and obviously is something that the community and senior staff want to see. The only thing about that, that I would be very, very cautious, is that you don't allow those folks to rank or rate candidates, you allow them to provide their thoughts to you. Good deal. Thank you, sir.
Terry?
Thank you. I'm Terry Karpner. Mr. Slavin and Ms. Lipscomb, thank you for being with us today. I just have one question, I think. In your proposal, you provided us with two, almost two and a half pages of recent placement experience.
Yes.
Out of those, I noticed that four, two were in 2022, one was in 2023, and one is current. Are there other executive-level placements, municipal placements you've done in '22, '23, and '24 besides just these that are shown here?
I don't have that in front of me, but the more, most recent ones we've done are Tarpon Springs, Florida, the Hertford County, North Carolina. We're doing Delaware, Ohio now. We're doing Dona Ana, New Mexico, which is a county, incredible place now. I don't know whether they're on that list or not.
Okay.
We've been pretty active recently. There was, we were in a slump, middle of the fall to the end of the year last year, and I think everybody was, but we sure were.
Thank you.
John?
Yes, good morning, Barbara, and good morning, sir. Just to set the record straight with, we have three proposals. So we've talked about your costs, it's 24,5, and 90 days, possibly less. Certainly, we hope you don't run into a problem, but there can be intervening variables. The two-year guarantee that you've mentioned.
Yes, sir.
And your placement rate, which we've talked about. The way I read your proposal, you are a traditionalist. I know you talk about critical path, but the process, the way I read it, is a very traditional process. One piece of it I do like is the onsite interview, and I assume that's with the candidate and the candidate's staff? I mean, it's a broader, or is it just restricted to the candidate?
It depends on the candidate and that person's willingness to allow. The most, what we like to do is spend several hours with them in their work location, have them, nobody knows why we're there except the candidate. We're usually introduced as a local government consultant, not as a local government recruitment consultant, and we'd like to walk through their town hall or their county administration building with them, and not only are we interviewing them, but we're looking at how people interact with them as we meet them, as they meet their staff, and sometimes we meet their bosses unexpectedly. If we have the opportunity to walk through downtown with them, it's interesting to see how people relate to them. Very interesting when we walk into a department with them and see how employees react to seeing their boss unexpectedly arrive in their office. Sometimes it's, you see a warm, professional greeting, sometimes you wonder whether the person, the staff has ever seen that person before. We're getting a feeling for them, and what's in the back of our minds is what you've said you're looking at in terms of interpersonal skills, of the soft skills. It's easy, it's easy to evaluate and measure how much time and experience they have in doing certain things, but it's not just what they do, it's how they do it that determines whether they'll be successful in one environment or another.
Okay, and I assume that's permission-based, and so it's really, it's really an observation tour?
There are times when we just plain can't do it. There was one a few years ago now in South Carolina, a city that you would recognize the name of, where that particular, or one of the finalist candidates was a senior deputy city manager in a different, in another very well-known city in South Carolina. No, in North Carolina, but our client was South Carolina, and that person had been told by his boss, the city manager, if he was going to look for a job, he might as well quit, because he was going to be fired. South Carolina law provides that there has to be at least three viable candidates for the city council to choose from, or, bottom line, that's it, they have to have three. During the course of the finalist interviews, there were five candidates, two were eliminated because the council didn't like them. One of them was this guy who said that he'd be fired if he didn't, if he was looking for another job.
Okay.
He had, gave me authorization to withdraw him if I needed to, because the group dropped to less than three. I did that. So then I had to go back and find a third, but one of the candidates who almost made it but didn't quite was a city employee, who we had already said no to, so I had to go back to him begging, "Please come back into the process." He did it reluctantly, but he told me I would owe him for a long time.
Okay.
He knew he wasn't going to be hired, he just, so.
Thank you. That's clear what you're doing with that process, and I would just note that you also offer follow-on services at six months and a year. Will that be you, sir, or someone from your staff?
It could be me, and probably Barbara with me. It's about a half-a-day process, and it is, in my opinion, an extremely valuable component to what we offer you. It doesn't cost you any more fee, but you would pay our transportation expenses, but the process puts you and your new manager on the same page in terms of expectations. Surprisingly enough, not many of our clients take us up on that, but it's, I think it's, I don't know that it's critical, but it's extremely helpful. You know at the end of a year, what that person, that person knows what the goals are, that you've set them, that at the end of the year, you can measure whether he or she has met them or not, and it leaves flexibility, so if something happens, like in this particular jurisdiction, hopefully not, some weather event, that would put you off course, you'd meet and adjust the goals to accommodate that destruction, that process that would distort the ability to meet the goal. But yeah, I think it's, it puts you, it puts the council and the manager in the same room at the same time, and you folks are part of the in the same room at the same time, and you folks are part of the same group.
Okay.
Manager's relationship with you is unique.
Thank you. One last question. So for me, personally, this is all about finding leadership that can move our town forward.
Yes.
In spite of the challenges we face. So I want to ask you what your definition of leadership is. I'm going to give you mine, the short version. I'm going to ask you for your short version of it. So, one, the leader has to set direction for this organization. Two, the leader creates value, whether it's a business, it's money, but here, it's enhancing the lives of the citizens. And three, the leader builds other leaders. He mentors and develops them. One, two, three. As you look at candidates, as you recruit candidates, how are you seeing leadership?
A lot of the same, same, same criteria. Also, the leadership has to be molded to what the elected body wants. And it's not the same as management, there's a distinction. A leader does all of those things, may provide some help to you in terms of community leadership, in the sense that you set goals and, and the course for the municipality, they very frequently are able to help you articulate that goal, so people know what you're doing, while you're doing what you're doing. It, it also is visibility. Get out, if you're going to lead, people have to know who you are, so being willing to get out, interact with people. It also frequently involves interaction with local, other neighboring governments in our leadership capacity. You're competing with the state and other agencies for different financial aspects. Leader needs to, to direct that also. So there are a lot of elements of leadership that I think either you have or you don't, and/or are willing to exercise or you're not. So, and we look at that. When we go, not just when we go to, undo the site visits, but when we do the referencing, we don't just reference people with their current employers, we go back. And those are the kinds of things that we will, the kind of questions we have will are determined, are designed to help determine whether or not those folks have exercised quality leadership throughout their career.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Just one question for me, because everybody covered all the other questions. So I appreciate that you pointed out that your, your background checks are included in your price. But you mentioned that you can also arrange for additional assessments that would not be covered, that we would have to cover that cost. Do you have an example of municipalities that have leveraged any kind of additional assessment? Or do you find that your background check is, is adequate? And, I mean, you've got a very successful track record of people staying in the job, so tell me a little bit about maybe some examples of someone that may have used an assessment center and why they would have done that?
I used to do assessment centers myself, but very, and I'm going to be real clear and direct. I have found, and we did it when I worked for local governments directly, and we did it as part of our support services to our clients. What I found out is that once somebody has been through one or two of them, they know how to psych the thing out, so they know how, they know what kind of behavior is being evaluated, and they will demonstrate that behavior. It's particularly evident when you're dealing with local, with police-fire promotionals. First of all, they decide who they want, who, which, and those are promotional exams, so they know the other competitors, and they're able to determine how to behave in order to get the top, the person they want on the top of the list. So it has flaws, but we also have arranged for some, so we can do it, and we would if that's something you want, and we have no people who are capable of doing it. We did it recently for Birmingham, the county in Birmingham, can't think of the name of the county right now, but we did an HR director, and they did a battery of, of tests, including a in-basket and other events that are related to, to an assessment center. We also have arranged for some types of, and sometimes some psychological, industrial psychological evaluations that, and we have people who can do that. Usually, it works best if you find somebody local that'll do it. It costs a few hundred bucks. You only pay more for that service if the cost for it will put us over that, that expense cap. If it's within that, you don't. But, and usually, when it's happened, and it doesn't happen very frequently, councilman, but it does happen, the, usually it's just for the finalists. You'll get it down to two or three and then put them through it. So, and this is probably value to it. You know, I've been doing this a long time, and I've determined a long time ago through watching, looking at what I've done and what the results of it are, and I, and even more convinced now than ever that the best indicator of what somebody's going to do is what they have done. And if you look at that and kind of, and take a look at the environment within which he or she has made those accomplishments, and then, and they fit your needs and what you're looking for, they'll probably be successful here. I'm not so sure that I can tell you that the psychological evaluation results are, have that same level of, give me the same level of confidence that they will, the person will succeed.
Thank you.
They'll tell you what they'll do in default. You know, if you're looking for a police chief, that person has got to have the characteristics of being able to stand up and be very authoritative. But they've learned to adjust their behavior in the testing so that they don't come across that way, and they, because in today's world, cops don't respond well to that, so. I don't know, Barbara, are you?
I'm here. I don't have any other comments on that.
So I have one, one question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
So coastal towns have very unique challenges. Everything from preservation of our shorelines, of which we have two that are very different.
Right.
As well as weather.
All right.
Challenges, as well as balancing the development of the town with a focus on residents versus rentals, as you might expect. So I don't see a lot in your portfolio with coastal towns. How might you find candidates that maybe have that experience that we would be interested in interviewing?
We've done quite a bit of that, Mayor. And I wasn't trying to display that here, but we've done Miami Beach recently, more recently Daytona Beach. They're different cities, certainly different than this one.
Right.
Pompano, going Florida, and Maryland, Ocean City, California, Huntington Beach. There's been a number of them. If I gave some thought to it, I'd give you several more. It, that experience, particularly the FEMA or emergency management experiences is important, and on, not, not too surprisingly, that is a factor that a lot of our clients are concerned about now, not just coastal people, but certainly Pompano, Pompano Beach was one of them. We did Sarasota, we did Clearwater, do a lot of work in Florida, and they're the ones that are coming to mind right now. So that type of experience is, is valuable. We can, we certainly have worked for communities where it's been particularly valuable because they're on the coast, and there, and there are a lot of folks who want it now because of things that happen inland that are disaster-related. FEMA credentials or, or experience with FEMA is something that people value, and it's a plus. So it's something we can handle, and I wouldn't, and if you wanted to focus on that as one of the preferred criteria, we would, we will.
Thank you. We're a little bit ahead of time. Are there any additional questions, council? Anything else? Do you have any questions for us?
I've read a lot, and I've been provided with some information about where you are now and where you want to go, and where you, and I've read a lot about where you've been. I've heard you, can't, don't test me on your budget, but I did go through it. The, one question I have is the way the council functions. The mayor and five, the five vote, and the mayor votes to break ties. Am I right?
Only in yea-nay votes, correct.
Oh, and to what?
Only when there is a yea-nay vote.
Oh, and there's, okay. And do you vote, does the mayor vote on the decision on a city manager, town manager?
Actually not. Hopefully, my colleagues will provide input, allow me to provide input, but, but I do not vote.
We're working with Winter Springs, Florida, right now, in the same way. Mayor does not vote on the, and there are five there too, plus the mayor.
I see our roles as being a bit different.
It is. It is different, and that's really why I asked. And you're all at large? Not from districts?
No, nor parties.
I'm sorry?
Nor are we connected within our roles with parties.
Thank you. Those are my questions, and I was trying to find answers to them last night, but my, couldn't get onto your charter, so I got your budget and a few other things, but not the charter. Thank you, folks, very, very much. I've enjoyed this, appreciate the opportunity. Glad Barbara could, could join us. And I'm really very, very pleased with what I've seen, and I look forward, hopefully, to working with you folks. And you'll, you'll get good work from us, and we'll, and it'll be something that we'll do with great pride, so.
So we are scheduled to make a decision early next week, and we will let you know.
Appreciate it.
Either way, thank you so much for your proposal and for your coming to meet with us today. We very much appreciate that.
Certainly, as I just finished saying, my pleasure, and I can't emphasize that enough, but it's just, your town, we've done some work from Myrtle Beach to it, I failed to mention that a minute ago, but one of the things I was thinking as I was driving around is that area, and then we've done a lot of work for Georgetown County in South Carolina. That road between Georgetown County and Myrtle Beach and northern Georgetown County reminded me a lot of the, of the topography here on the water side, the ocean side. Yeah, so, thought it was beautiful, and I was impressed with the way it's developed and the way it's handled, been handled here. So thank you. It'll be a pleasure.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Barbara. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Well, cheers. Appreciate it.
Bye now.
Bye now.
Leave this here, or?
Yes, you can. We'll get it.
Thanks. Thanks again.
Thank you. So anything else from council?
I just have one thing, Mayor. I, I took the liberty of crafting a draft contract for the search firms. I shared it with Mr. Eads. He reviewed it. He made several comments. I'm happy to share it with my fellow council members, if you would like to take a look, but I consider it a collaborative effort with Mr. Eads.
Council, would you like to, yeah, that'll help us get ahead of the game?
There are several highlighted yellow areas that will be filled in pertinent to the firm we select, how billing will be done, et cetera, et cetera.
If you can send that to Lisa. Lisa, that okay?
Mm-hmm.
And she can distribute it.
And we are, I'm sorry. That's great. Send it on. We are confirmed for Monday, 6:00 PM, correct?
Monday, 6:00 PM.
Mark, are okay with you?
Okay.
Yep.
And we got you out of here by noon.
I know.
Thank you, everyone. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
I'm sorry, you need a motion to recess to?
Oh.
Is it Monday?
Yes, I forgot. Thank you.
Motion to recess this meeting to Monday, 6:00 PM.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much. It was unanimous.
See, and I'm going across.